I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, March 3rd. Roll call please Denise.
Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here. And Mayor Pro Tem Olson would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd be happy to. Please stand by your handlebar.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And you may be seated. I would like to read something I read from Simon Mainwaring who is a branding consultant and a social media specialist, 48 years old. We need to develop and disseminate an entirely new paradigm and practice of collaboration that supersedes the traditional silos that have been, that have divided government, private enterprise, and philanthropies for decades and replace it with a network of partnerships working together to create a globally prosperous society. The other announcement I would like to make is since being on the council, we notice that every once in a while items come up that are a little contentious or very emotional and passionate. And I would like to remind us as we move forward in the months to come, there will be many issues facing the city council and I would like us to, everyone to act with a high level of decorum, respect for other people, and if there are outbursts and things like that in the future, people will be removed from the chambers. Announcements?
Mayor, I think I have a couple, maybe just one. I think we are going to move presentation number one from this evening's agenda and put that on the following agenda. And I think that's the only announcement I have.
I have one Mayor.
Yes.
Jennifer and Jordan Monroe are the proud parents of a baby girl. They had her this morning at 9:35 a.m., seven pounds, three and a half ounces and nineteen and a half inches, and her name is Ren Logan.
Excellent. Congratulations out there if you're watching us from your hospital room.
Why would they want to watch us?
Okay. Written communication?
Among written communication received was a response to the city's letter to the CPUC authored by Councilmember Hernandez. We did receive that last week and we are working on, one of the items requested in the letter which was a meeting with CPUC staff in Southern California Edison to discuss water tariffs. It's in the works.
Thank you. Okay, that being all, presentations?
Yes, so since we removed presentation number one, that leaves us with the second one. So this evening we have Southern California Edison doing a presentation. We're going to be hearing from Tony Edison who is the region manager for Metro East as well as Ron Garcia who is our region manager for local public affairs. So Mr. Edison.
Okay. Okay, my name is Tony Edison. First of all, good evening ladies and gentlemen. I'm the region manager for what we call the Metro East Region for Southern California Edison. It's made up of five geographic districts that take care of the distribution system. Catalina is one of those districts that I am responsible for. First time in front of the council here, but I've been responsible for Catalina District for the past two years. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come talk about your concerns around movement of water from the million gallon tank area or the million gallon tank on over to Wrigley Reservoir. I understand there's significant concern around that and I want to talk about that tonight. I've also brought along Andrew Barnes who works for Geosyntec. He's an independent consultant. We utilize our services to do water sampling, have been for the past year. We're going to talk a little bit about that too. So kind of in an order of priorities, I want to talk about why we're sampling, why we're using filters out there because some folks wonder why we're doing that. I'd also like to talk about why we're refurbishing the million gallon tank. Talk a little bit about why we're moving the water and what's the reason for that? Why aren't we just using it over there and then start the project after that? And then I want to address the concern around, or not concern, but the request around sampling, independent sampling that has been requested. So hopefully we'll address all the concerns, open up questions. I'd like to move through a little bit of the presentation as we go and then get to a question and answer.
Sounds great, thank you.
First of all, I think we missed an opportunity here. We have been meeting out at, community of Two Harbors along with the folks that work at the institute to discuss the million gallon tank, the project, the concerns around the water quality. I'll get a little bit into that around the sampling, but we missed an opportunity to come in front of the folks in the city of Avalon to discuss why we're moving water from one location where there's been concerns raised around the quality of that water into the Avalon, called the Avalon Water Supply. Those two systems are not joined together and so we're moving that water from that side of the island on into the Avalon system and I think it was a missed opportunity in our efforts to get that project moving along because we've been, we've been trying to start that project since like September of last year. We thought we were going to get the go-ahead and then we've been working through some significant permitting issues and challenges and finally got the go-ahead at the beginning of the year, late at the end of last year, beginning of this year. And we wanted to start the drawdown and getting that project moving along. And in our efforts to do that, we failed to come here and talk about why we're doing that and allay the concerns around the water. I think most importantly, I want to make sure that when we walk away tonight, you understand how confident we are in the water sampling and the quality of that water. We certainly wouldn't be serving it to the consumers over on that side of the island and I wouldn't want you guys to think that we're moving water that is contaminated, not quality, over to this side of the island. So the question comes is why are we sampling the water over there? We responded to concerns and claims that we had a quality problem with our water specifically around PCBs that may be contained in that water due to coal tar lining, lining the million gallon tank. In an effort, we wanted to respond to that. We felt that that was important. Even though we sample the water, we submit our samples to a different lab than Geosyntec, we felt it was important to employ the services of an independent party and that's where Geosyntec comes in. Best-in-class organization, world-class organization for that matter, that deals with analysis and water sampling around these kinds of issues. Andrew will speak to the specifics on what they found as they've gone on, but they've been doing this for almost a year since last February, testing and sampling this water. And he'll speak to how they went about that and how they established the protocol to do that. It's important to note that the sampling that we're doing is above and beyond our normal sampling protocol. We, like I said, we sample our system in many places and on a frequency that it pales in comparison to what we're doing with, with Geosyntec. And again, that is out of response and trying to take a step back and not be the ones doing the sampling ourselves, but have an independent evaluator and consultant come in and do the, do the studying for us and tell us what the results are, not us telling ourselves that it's okay, that kind of thing. So the next question becomes, let me back up. So we've been doing that sampling and we've also met with the folks out at Two Harbors and talked with the folks with the, with the institute about those results. I feel really confident saying I think we've allayed their concerns out there about concern around water and the quality of water. They certainly, the issues were raised up, I think we've addressed them. I think we took an out of measure and this is what I want to talk about around filters. Why did we install filters out there? If, if the sampling were getting prior to installing the filters in July and then put them in operation in August 2014, why would you install filters out there? We look at it as a bit of a belts and suspenders approach, if you will. In our mind, we're not, it's not necessary, but we did it to address what we saw as a little bit of anxiety even after sharing the results on the water quality and the non-detect samples that we were getting. We felt we needed to take one more step to allay those concerns and so we established a plan to install filtration at both the discharge pipes that come from million gallon tanks. So one heads on over towards the Wrigley Institute and the other one heads down towards Two Harbors. And so we have filter skids that have been installed at those two locations and those filters, technical, but at one micron type size filter, we're talking about the ability to filter out cigarette smoke. That's, that's how fine and how much of a job they do. Andrew can certainly speak to more of the specifics around that, but the point is we're filtering out whatever's in that water, right? You know, be it dirt, be it any kind of chemical, we're filtering it out. And again, we, it was mostly out of trying to address, again, when we walked away, we, there was still a sense of anxiety around the quality of water and certainly because, you know, folks had raised the issue around it and we wanted to allay those concerns. So then you might ask, why are we refurbishing the million gallon tank? If we're filtering the water, if we're sampling the water, why would you have to do this project? That tank needs, is in need of repair. No piece of equipment lasts forever. It's, you know, infrastructure replacement, if you will. We're not replacing it, we're refurbishing it. We're going to, you know, right now we're in the process of draining it. Ultimately, we'll open up the side, we'll go in, we'll remove the lining of the tank that is in need of repair. We know that through engineering studies. We also know that the floor, although we don't know to the, what extent or how much of the floor needs to be replaced, we do know that there's thinning in the floor and that has to be replaced. We know at least a third of the outside perimeter is ha, is going to have to be replaced, but it's quite possible that we'll have to do the entire floor. We won't know that until we get in there and really remove the lining, able to do non-damaging examination and say, do we have to replace it all or just the third of it? Our initial plan is to replace just the third part of it. It will speed up the project, but if we have to do the full floor, it's going to add time to the project. It's simply a matter of maintaining a piece of equipment is really what it boils down to. It, I'm going to get the date wrong, but I believe it's been in service for more than 50 years and not a whole lot's been done on the inside of it and so we've got to do something with that. We've done some refurbishment on the outside. There was some suggestion when we first started looking at the project that we may have to replace the entire tank, but it looks like we're going to be able to do it the way, I know that's the way we're going to be able to do it, is remove the entire lining and replace the, the floor. All right, so the next question you're going to ask, and this is probably the most important one, is why are we moving the water from a million gallon tank over to Wrigley Reservoir? When we initially set out to perform this project, we felt that we were going to start the project at a time of high consumption and so the drawdown of the tank would have been at a faster rate just through consumption. Here we are in February, or March now, very low consumption time period. And every day that we don't get inside that tank, costs of the project go up and we're trying to mitigate that, right? And as well as we're trying to beat the clock on, although it doesn't look like we're going to be able to, of when we're going to be able to get inside, complete the project, and refill the tank. So we're up against a bit of a time clock. The other reason, and this is probably the most important reason, is we're trying to preserve precious resource here. Why, you know, one, one thing we could do is we could move it to a different direction and essentially waste that water. We're taking, we're confident in is that it's water safe for consumption, we're serving customers on that side of the island, why would we take the better part of 900,000 gallons and waste it? Why would we not move it over to, to the city of Avalon or at least the Wrigley Reservoir and conserve water? You guys have been doing a yeoman's job of conserving water and water rationing right now. It would be silly for us to drain that water. We wouldn't even be able to drain it on the ground, but the point is if we move it over to the west end, right now we're, you know, dealing with Howland's Well over there and if we moved it that direction, it really would be a waste of water that, consumable water. And in an effort to kind of stay true to what we're trying to do during this drought, it makes sense for us to move that water at a pretty significant expense on over to Wrigley Reservoir. But for the fact that if we had a pipeline that connected to those two systems, that's the way we would have transported it that way. We're agreeable to a third-party sampling that you guys have asked for, but I want, and when Andrew comes up here, I want him to kind of speak to some ideas around we have, where we have around the protocol and how, how that might be facilitated. I will put out there though, we are about one week's worth of consumption and water shipping away from having that tank drained to the point where we can start a project inside the tank. So we're kind of up against the clock here. There's not a lot left in the tank and quite frankly, we stand ready to start moving water starting tomorrow. We came here in an effort to address the concerns, but we intend to start moving water back over to Wrigley to continue to drain the tank so we can move along with the project. So I say that and we're agreeable to sampling. I don't want to, I don't want to suggest that it's all or not. The point would be is it has to be done quickly and, because again, as we move forward with this project, there's going to be no water in the tank to sample. Any questions so far before I introduce Andrew and have him talk about some of the sampling?
I have a couple of quick ones.
Yeah.
I'll go first. How much, approximately how much water's been moved so far?
I don't have the exact number. At peak, if we're able to do as many water deliveries as we'd like to, you know, so on a good day, we'll be able to move approximately about 18,000 gallons a day. I think when we first looked at the schedule, it looked to be somewhere in the range of about 500,000 gallons that we would be moving via water, or a water truck. Might be slightly more than that, so a good guess.
But approximately how much has been moved so far? I mean, half of that, a third?
I'm going to speculate, it's probably somewhere in the 300,000 to 400,000 gallon range that we've been moving with water.
A little more than half probably?
Yeah.
Ultimately, I know that we have a lot of other questions up here, so I'm going to let others ask them too, but are the Avalon ratepayers the ones who will pay ultimately for this project? I mean, there's a lot of expense in these water trucks going three times a day. It's pretty expensive to do that and all the repairs to the tank. Does that come back on Avalon ratepayers?
All water ratepayers over here. It's not just Avalon, it's all water ratepayers. This isn't, even though the systems aren't tied together, it is one system and one water rate, water rate case that we put together. There's an interesting little piece on million gallon tank. There's also cost shared with the Wrigley Institute and so some of that cost is borne by USC.
And why all the way to the Wrigley Reservoir? Why not putting it into, back in the Middle Ranch and?
So there's, there's an issue with taking chlorinated water and putting it in the Middle Ranch Reservoir. You have to do something, you have to treat it.
Got it.
And to, you know, take out the chlorine, essentially reduce the chlorine in it. And so the only practical place to move it was Wrigley Reservoir. And again, practical from our standpoint is also preserving the precious resource, right? And so, you know, if we could have done it closer, it's cheaper for us, it's cheaper for the ratepayers, it's, it moves the project on faster. We could have done more water deliveries in the same day, right? So we went as far as we had to at Wrigley Reservoir being placed.
And how will you fill the tank when you've done your repairs?
How do we fill the tank?
Yeah.
Still wrestling a little bit with that question. It depends a little bit on timing when we finish up the project. So, so for example, if we finish up the project in high, in high consumption period, it's going to be all that the wells that serve million gallon tank can do to meet demand. And so filling up million gallons worth of water is going to be a slow go. If we end the project later in the summer or towards, towards the fall, then we have some capacity to fill it up with cottonwood and sweetwater wells. But again, it goes to project length, project, actually one, another thing I want to highlight is around, one, it's about project cost, but what's also significant is this is a, it's not insignificant in the fact that we've got a million gallon tank out of service, out of the system, and it does affect reliability. It does affect our ability to provide fire suppression, which much of that tank is dedicated for, for the Wrigley Institute. We have a temporary system in place, but it is a temporary system. It is not the most effective means to facilitate fire suppression for that area that it serves. And so, you know, there's, there's three real drivers here that are, want, making us want to accelerate this project and get it done as quickly as possible. One being reliability, two being fire suppression, and third being the financial component.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you aware that the water at the million gallon tank is, is a very controversial water source?
From, yes.
Okay. Polychlorinated biphenols. Let's see, polychlorinated biphenols, okay. Let me ask you something, right off the bat, you made a statement that you said you were moving water from the million gallon tank to the Wrigley Reservoir?
Wrigley Reservoir.
You're putting in, putting it in the Wrigley Reservoir?
It's going through a bypass pipe, it doesn't, it-
Okay, so you're not putting it in the Wrigley Reservoir?
It ends up in Wrigley Reservoir.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
Well, what's, it's going into a bypass pipe? What's, how does it go into the Wrigley Reservoir?
It ends up directly into the reservoir.
Oh, it does? Okay, so it does go into the reservoir?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, I want to let you know that, and just the general audience, that my concern is for the well-being of the citizens of Avalon and I'm hopeful that Edison is as well. I'm sure you're aware that the people who drink water containing polychlorinated biphenols in excess of a maximum containment level of 500 parts per trillion, over many years experienced changes in their skin, problems in their thymus glands, immune deficiencies, reproductive and nervous system difficulties, and may have increased risk of cancer. These are only a few of the possible health effects. I'm not even going to mention all the rest of them. That's why the EPA regulates PCBs. Has Edison violated any laws with the handling of water related to PCBs on Catalina Island?
We have not.
Factual? You have not?
We have not.
Okay.
And I brought, like I said, our consultant here to speak to the science of that and talk to, about the sampling and what we're finding as we sample this water and what the values are.
Did the water-
And we're going to speak to that.
Okay, did the water tanks that were replaced in Falls Canyon contain PCBs material?
I was not heard when Falls Canyon tank was replaced.
Okay. Can you find out that information?
Certainly.
Okay, would you share that? Be kind enough to share that with the, with the citizens of Avalon and the members of this panel when you find out that information?
Representative.
Okay. Under the EPA guidelines, any company or business involved with the disposal of PCBs must notify the EPA using Form 7710-53 and make it available to the public. Has Edison complied with the EPA?
I don't even know the answer to that.
You don't even know the answer? Okay. Can you find out the answer to that?
Certainly.
Okay, and you can share that with us as well. If I was to call the Community Rights to Know hotline at 800-424-9346, would I access the information about the PCBs released at the million gallon tank, into the million gallon tank? Do you think?
Don't know the answer.
You don't have an answer?
I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, you don't know the answer to that? Okay. I didn't, I don't recall being notified within 30 days after the discovery of PCBs in the Falls Canyon and the million gallon tank at Two Harbors, or was I offered alternative drinking water to prevent serious risk to my health and the public's health that I represent? Why wasn't the public made known when Edison had meetings at, at Two Harbors and they made people aware that there was contamination in the million gallon tank and then they provided the people of the Isthmus with a water? Was, and why wasn't anybody on, the city government of Avalon invited to that meeting? And the several meetings that you had down there? I don't even know how many you've had that we weren't invited to.
So it's not about uninviting or inviting? We knew we needed to go over there?
It was a public, it's supposed to be made public.
Certainly understand it. It wasn't secret. The meetings that we've had over in Two Harbors-
It was a secret, is that what you said?
It was not secret.
Oh, it wasn't a secret?
Yeah.
Well, how come nobody on this, nobody in Avalon that I even know of was informed of it? Can you-
Mr. Sampson, I think I addressed that in the beginning. I did say, I think we missed an opportunity here. I think we absolutely-
Okay.
-could have extended either an invitation for, you know, attendance on that side or an opportunity to come here and talk, which we're doing tonight. We're responding to that concern and that's why we're here to talk about it. I think, you know, your, your questions around PCBs, I'm not a scientist. I'm a distribution guy. I work on distribution and electric systems. Catalina happens to have the one, one area in our system, water and gas, and I know that's important to you guys. I get it. But I'm not a scientist and I'm certainly not somebody that can speak to as an expert on PCBs. I can tell you that we're extremely confident in the quality of that water and we do that and we, we base that on the sampling that we're doing there. We're not getting PCBs detected in the water that we're providing over on that side of the island. And where we're pulling this water from is beyond those filters. First of all, it's important to understand, and again, Andrew's going to speak to it, we're sampling in front of the filters and we're sampling after the filters. The water that we're removing from million gallon tank occurs after the filters and we're moving it over to Wrigley Reservoir.
Do you understand why, what, why I'm questioning you about these things? After you didn't, you didn't make a public statement? Other words, Mr. Garcia comes in here on a regular basis and tells us all about different things that Edison does. Matter of fact, he's like the fourth public affairs representative that we've had here. For some reason Edison isn't comfortable leaving the same public affairs representative here. For some reason you guys keep switching them out, especially when we start liking one person. So, so where's, can you, can you provide me with any information that you distributed in Avalon that will allow us to understand why there was no public announcement made in Avalon for this, these meetings that were held at the Isthmus?
So again, we're here tonight to talk about it. It was out of response, in response to that request. We're here tonight to talk about it. We're providing all the sampling data tonight, a year's worth of that data. You can analyze it and take a look at what the results were. We're also open to, again, agreeable to allowing for a third-party independent sampling if that's what you want to do. I do want to emphasize, that's what Geosyntec is to us, is a third-party independent of Southern California Edison. We have to pay them, but the bottom line is they're independent. They're not somebody that's entrenched in our business.
I think what, what my questions surround you, that surround, is the point of transparency, clarity, punctuality, being forward, being outgoing, being open. When we ask you a question, you answer it. I mean, I can't tell you how many questions I've sat up here and asked point-blank to your representatives and said, can you bring somebody back? I invited Mr. Hyde to a meeting about three weeks ago, four weeks ago. He was, he was sending email by, by our city manager. He didn't show up. I had some serious information. I had some serious information. I'm, I'm seriously saying, I, I, I hope you guys do not start moving water tomorrow, and I'd like to do all we can to stop you from moving any more water at this point until we have it tested. I'm not, I'm not convinced that this water that you're delivering to, to Avalon is, is, is of the quality that we want. Okay, I know we need, I know we need water, but why didn't you just send it out west? Why did you have to send it out east? Isn't that a terrible expense to the repairs?
So quickly, so we don't bog down in the details of why you don't move the water to the west. Holland's Well is not up and running. We have a system that has rakish water, if you will, in it, and to take potable water and then introduce it into that system, flush that system out of, essentially, because at some point it would be flushed out with that much water. When you're not ready to put the well in service, it would have been wasted.
How many millions of dollars was spent at the Holland's Well to get that online? How many millions of dollars that we could have spent on a desalination plant to upgrade the one we have out here? The, the, you know...
Yeah, I, I, I'm not prepared to speak to the technicalities around a desalination plant, increased desalination. That's, that's really not what we're here for tonight. We're here to talk about the water that is coming out of a million gallon tank.
It has everything to do with the water.
Oh, I understand that, but I, I can't speak to the specifics around desalination and why we're not investing money in desalination versus Holland's Well. Um, there's plenty of reasons why I'm not doing that. We've really got something for tonight.
I do believe we are deviating a little bit, so I would like you to continue.
Deviating from what?
Getting into decel at this point, I think it's a deviation.
We're talking about water.
They're talking, they came to talk about water sampling data from the million gallon tank. Its relevance and its significance, so if we can...
We're talking about supplying the city of Avalon with water from Edison Company, okay? And if they can't do it, we need to find a company that can do it, and we need to take over the water system and do it the way we need it done.
Okay, we're good. Would you please continue?
So, I'd like to introduce Andrew Barnes. He, he's a principal hydrogeologist for Geoscientec. He's going to come up here and talk a little bit about the sampling, sampling results. Not going to get too technical on it. Uh, we, we're going to provide the year's worth of sampling results, so if you guys want to examine those, or somebody that you trust can examine the, the results of those tests, we'll be happy to turn those over. We've turned over a couple, couple, three months up to this point, but we have the entire year's worth of sampling. Um, he's also going to discuss the ideas around sampling protocol for doing an independent sampling, if that's what you would like to do. Uh, and also talk about how they go about doing the sampling over there at Million Gallon Tank.
And let me just ask one more question, because you had said that you believed if you started delivering the water, moving the water tomorrow, that project would be done, with the exception of what you are going to leave down at the bottom, by when?
We anticipate, it'd take about a week to drain the, the remaining balance of water that we need to move out of there. Uh, there is some amount of water that we'll end up putting in temporary storage tanks that will not be consumed, uh, and so we anticipate that roughly will be in about a week. Or if we're dealing with weather, the roads, we wouldn't have been able to pass today on those roads, but I think starting tomorrow, if not Thursday, we'd be able to start moving water.
Okay. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor, council members, city staff, my name is Andrew Barnes. I thank you for the introduction, Tony. I work for a company called Geoscientec Consultants. My office is in Hunter Beach, California. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you here tonight and answer any questions that you might have. I understand that you have a copy of the report that our company has provided. Uh, it's, it's a report that we continually update after we get new results. Uh, we distribute that to the folks at Two Harbors. But, um, I've heard that there's a great deal of concern about water quality, and I hope that some of what I talk about tonight will help address that. Thank you. So, Geoscientec got, uh, started on this project about a year ago when the Edison Company called us and said, we have, uh, we have constituents who are concerned about the water quality, specifically in the million gallon tank. The million gallon tank was built about in 1957, and in order to protect the metal, they coated the inside of it, we're using coal tar. It was a standard industry practice in water distribution systems. Uh, coal tar is exactly what it sounds like, it's a petroleum-based, uh, uh, material. As you apply it, when it's hot, it starts to get thickened up, and so what happens is they would actually put in PCB oils in that, uh, material to keep it loose, use it as a plasticizer. What's really important about PCBs is that they really like to stay with petroleum. They do not like water, and so when you coat a tank that's used for drinking water, it was deemed to be safe at the time because PCBs wouldn't dissolve into water, not at levels that you can ever detect. So, uh, since then, we've learned a lot about PCBs since the 50s, 40s and 50s, and as a result, a lot of water systems are, are starting to phase that out. So, there are distribution systems on the mainland that still have coal tar lining in them, and they are, they are in the process of removing it. So this is not an uncommon situation, I just wanted to sort of give a little context for that. Um, like I said, there was, there was an issue with, a perceived issue with the water quality in the million gallon tank, and so, uh, we got the call, and Edison really said, look, we, we don't know, uh, we don't know if this is true or not, we need you guys to go out there and do an independent analysis and tell us what, what the water system has in it, and what we need to do to deal with that, with the occurrence, if there is anything in the water. So, we came over, uh, we performed a survey of the system, of the Two Harbor system, we inspected the outside of the million gallon tank, we looked to see how the water was conveyed from the tank to the two areas where the consumers are located, Two Harbors and the Marine Institute. Um, we went then back to our offices and developed a sampling program. Uh, we identified locations along the pipeline out past the million gallon tank where we thought it would be a good idea to collect a water sample, because that water sample would be relatively representative of the water that people were drinking. That's really important to, to us, is, is to get a location in that transmission that we could sample and say, beyond this point, um, the water quality would be relatively the same. So, we identified those locations, in fact, there was, on one pipeline that goes to Two Harbors, there wasn't a sampling port, so we asked Edison to put one in for us. They did. Uh, that is about the, the most involvement that Edison has had in our program. Uh, every month thereafter, starting about middle of February, we come out, our scientist comes out and independently, uh, collects water samples from several ports in that system. And I'm going to go through the chronology here in a moment, because if, with the introduction of the filters, uh, we, we've made modifications. Um, so, uh, the, the sampling ports that we identified are outside the million gallon tank, uh, in both pipelines, one to the Marine Institute and one to Two Harbors, and in February, April, May, and we collected those samples, sent them to a laboratory that our independent, uh, chemist and lab auditor recommended, so that laboratory is actually in Savannah, Georgia. Uh, they are, in our opinion, one of the best laboratories qualified to analyze PCBs. So we sent the, uh, the samples from, from the distribution system to Georgia, and we get the results, and then we would report them back to the consumers over at the institute and Two Harbors. We had several of those community meetings in order to communicate the findings to the people who are directly consuming that water, felt it was an important thing. So, um, those meetings were set up by the Edison Company, they, at the request of the citizens, they invited us. Um, I've been to those meetings, as well as a toxicologist from my company. Uh, he came out to talk about the potential health risks associated with PCBs. Uh, Councilmember Sampson, I think that you had a, a very good description of the potential health impacts of PCBs, I think that's, uh, right from the EPA website, if I'm not mistaken, that's, that those are the health concerns. Uh, what's really important about the information that you shared is that the federal government and the state of California have set up what's called the maximum contaminant level, MCL. That's the level at which a chemical, in this case PCBs, can be present in, in the water that you consume over a lifetime, and it's protective of your health. So in this case, it's half a part per billion, five thirds parts per trillion, and if you drink that water all your life, the, the thought is by the EPA and the state that it is protective of your health. So, the, the skin effects, the thyroid issues, the potential cancer, wouldn't manifest themselves at that level if you consumed that water for a lifetime. And a lifetime is generally thought to be about 70 years. So, really, really good information, and that's the kind of information that we were trying to communicate, and we did communicate, to the consumers at Two Harbors and, and the Marine Institute. Fortunately, we have a great mixture of people in that audience. We have scientists from the institute, and we have laypeople from the community, and it, the confluence, the, you bring those people together, the questions that get asked are fantastic. So we spent as much time as we, as, as we needed to answer all the questions and address all the concerns of the citizens. And it was great to speak to both scientists who understood the jargon that I deal with for 25 years, uh, and, and still, uh, actually, they were very helpful in communicating to people who don't speak my language every day, so. To me, that was, that was a great, uh, a great benefit, collecting these data, but also being able to share them. In, uh, July, um, in response to some of the concerns, and, uh, Tony was mentioning this, there was still a concern about particulates. So I told you that PCBs don't readily dissolve in water, and that's true. Uh, we weren't seeing in any of these samples, we never found detectable amounts of PCBs. We made sure that the laboratory gave us, what are called detection limits, they were looking for levels below that MCL. So if anything was present at the MCL, our laboratory would have found it for us. So, yeah, in February, in April, in, uh, May, all non-detect, all below the MCL. So that gives us good confidence that over a long period of time, the water that we're is being served is of good quality. The PCBs are, are non-detect, we can't find, they're, if they're present at all, they're at minute concentrations. Um, but the, the issues of particulates in an aging tank was raised, and, uh, PCBs like to absorb to organic material like coal tar. So the issue was, well, maybe particulates are coming through the system. We have, have been sampling what's called total suspended salt, so we looked for that component, we haven't found any, but it was an issue for the consumers, and so, uh, Edison came to us and, and asked us for our recommendation on what particle size we need to filter, and we recommended one micron, and I think Tony just described how fine of a, a mesh that is. Um, and those filters were put in, uh, I think they were put in in July, and in August they were operation. So now we have a new system that's between the million gallon tank and the consumers. What we decided to do was sample before and after that filter, and so, importantly, the filter is going to improve, if, if, if it's possible, the quality of the water. So that should be the best quality of water. The reason why we elected to keep a sample before the filter is that in the case of the Two Harbors line, there is a branch that goes off of that line and serves a camp that is between the institute and Two Harbors, and so that was not being filtered. So now we have a sample that measures the concentrations of PCBs in water that's going to the camp as well as Two Harbors. So everyone who's received those waters were testing their water quality. Um, so that was in July, August. We sampled September, October, November, December, and January, but actually also sampled in February. It's a monthly program. Uh, I can speak to the results all the way through January, again, all non-detect. Um, the, when we go out to Two Harbors, we give them a, an updated report that I think that you have. We also attach analytical reports. Um, I understand there's a request from this body to have a copy of our analytical reports, so this is a binder, uh, with tabs for each sampling event from February of last year through January of this year. These are all results that we consider validated, so after the laboratory gives us the results, we have a chemist check their work, and if their work passes our chemist's muster, then we call them validated, so I understand that.
Really heavy reading.
So those are the same, those are the data that all of the folks at Two Harbors and the Isthmus have. So, uh, the last point I would like to just mention is that we did, again, we did sample in February, those results are being processed by the laboratory. Uh, once we get those and validate those, then we can, them available to, to you as well as the folks at, at Two Harbors. So that's my discussion, my presentation about what we have done with the samples. I'm happy to answer any questions, I understand that. When we write technical reports, they're not necessarily, and, uh, we use a lot of jargon in our business, and so if there are questions, I'm happy to answer any, any questions you may have.
What breaks down coal tar?
Age.
What about chlorine?
Um, chlorine with, I, I'm not sure...
Like the chlorine they put in, in the water?
Yeah, I, see, PCBs actually have chlorine in them, that's what makes them toxic. So, at the addition of chlorine, uh, I'm, I'm not sure if it accelerates the breakdown of the coal tar itself, but it's, to me, unlikely.
Okay, so you're not sure if that breaks down the lining?
Not, not any faster than the age of, of the coal tar that's in there.
Okay, all right. Have you checked, um, the, the, all the sediment on the bottom of the tank and what all that is?
You know, we have not checked the sediment that's currently on the bottom of the tank. However, in the report that we did, uh, when we first went out, there was, there's another issue, that is, we, uh, there was a report that PCBs that had been, it really was the bottom of the tank, sediment get, that sediment gets vacuumed up periodically, and that vacuum material comes out to the surface and goes through filters, they're literally bags, bag filters. Um, there was a report that those bags remained on the ground, and so, Geoscientec did a soil sampling program around the million gallon tank as well. We did find PCBs in surface sediments at relatively low levels, but to answer your question, that material came from the million gallon tank, the bottom of it, it's, it's likely that then, you could say that we have tested the bottom sediment material, but it was after it was outside the tank.
Okay, well, that's not good either. That's terrible. That's, that's, that's in our soil, that's in our earth. That blows around in the atmosphere.
It does. It, it, it has that potential. It, one of the things about the million gallon tank is it's situated on, on volcanic material, so it's a big, it, it's very porous and it's very, uh, there's very little soil on top of it. It's a, it, it's, looks like, feels like lava. So it, there's not a lot of soil for it to contaminate, but it is on the surface. Uh, it can blow around, but the concentrations that we found it at, um, are, compared to this, screening levels of both EPA, federal EPA and the state have screening levels. And, uh, those screening levels, we talked about in our report, what, uh, the concentrations they were found in, and in general, less than half of the samples that we collected and analyzed had concentrations that exceeded the screening level. So there were some samples that, that were above this risk-based screening level, but not very much, not very many, and the concentrations were not, uh, significantly higher than the, than the screening levels.
Do you have any idea who's going to, which company is going to come in and get rid of that sediment at the bottom of the tank? Can you tell me that information?
I don't know, but it would be part of the current system that's going of refurbishment right now, so.
Okay. Isn't it, isn't it true that the maximum contaminant level is actually zero? The, 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 the Public Utilities Commission, or whoever governs this information, just set it at 500 parts per trillion?
Yeah, there's, so there's an important distinction here, there's an important distinction here. What you're talking about is the called the goal, the maximum contaminant goal, and there are many, uh, uh, possible carcinogens and carcinogens that they set that limit, the goal of zero, but they recognize that it's impossible, we don't have the technology available to us to test down to that level, and we don't have the technology available to us to clean to that level. So instead, what the EPA, the state does, they create what is called the MCL, not the goal, but the MCL. This is the legally enforceable limit, and it's really based on technology and health. So when you talk about the MCL, again, exposure to those levels over 70 years, drinking X amount of water per day, that goes into the calculation of where they set the legally enforceable limit. So, in the, in the eyes of EPA, and you'll read this on the website, I invite folks to, to look at their website, they say that this, this level is protective of health, even though the goal is zero. I think we all would agree that it's, that's where we need to go, but our technology just doesn't allow us to get there yet.
Exactly, okay, you can't actually, um, thank you, that was very informative. Um, I'd still say that we, um, absolutely need to do our own testing, um, and I think we do need to do testing in a broad fashion. We need to test in Avalon, we need to test in, uh, the Cottonwood Well Cap, we need to test before the water goes in the million tank, after it goes out of the million tank, we need to test the filters, we need to test the sediment, we need to see what's going on for ourselves. And you know what? You guys probably are providing us with a very great, um, water source, but I can't guarantee the public that I represent that, and I'm going to still tell them, don't drink the water until we finish our testing and, um, and we figure out what's going on, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that I don't want any more water delivered up, up, from, from that million gallon tank into the Avalon, um, homes, the, the homes and hearts of Avalon people. They, we, I don't, right now, I don't believe in my... They, I don't, right now, I don't believe in my heart that I can actually say that it's a safe thing to do. I'd like to take your word for it, sir, but I'm not gonna do that when it comes to the health and well-being of the constituency that I represent, which is also the ratepayers of Edison, and is also the stockholders of Edison, which a lot of people that live in this town, like myself, own stock in Edison.
If I may, I, I think, I'm not here to change your mind, but personally, I've been through this process. I've developed a sampling plan, we've done the sampling, I've seen the results firsthand. When I go to our meetings in Two Harbors, like right now, I get a little dry mouth. I have no problem drinking the water, I do. To me, I know, because I'm in control of it, and that's the difference, I'm in control of the data, I can control of the sampling, I understand the processes there. It gives me great comfort. I would invite, I know that there was a discussion about taking split samples. I am happy to have you or your representatives come and watch us sample, watch how we conduct our investigation. I would suggest that if you want to take samples, it would be probably the best thing to do for you or your consultant to watch us and have us do the same protocol that we've been doing every month. So that will give you confidence that the same methods that we use every month are replicable. And then you can have the sample and analyze by your own laboratory.
I'm confident from this point on that we are definitely, that we definitely have our microscopes out and that things are gonna be done a little bit more poignant, clear, transparent, forthright. I'm confident that Edison has to do that now. It would be a disaster if they didn't. And I will see to it that that happens. I will see to it, because that's what the people of Avalon have elected me up here to do. I was elected because I'm the water guy. I don't know a lot about water scientifically, but I have pretty good common sense. And I would like to be there when the water testing is done, when the water sampling is done, when we take the water from the different areas that I have, that I have mentioned, I'd like to be there. I'd like to see that, those samples get to the laboratory where they will be tested. And I do trust your judgment, sir, and I'll bet you work for a great company, and I'll bet that what you're saying is accurate and true. But just the simple fact that we were left out of the loop, and it was a whoops, we forgot to invite you guys to this, or we forgot to make this public hearing, public to the people of Avalon, that puts up a big caution sign for me and the people that I represent. So I'd like to let you gentlemen know, I have nothing personally against you guys. As a matter of fact, we love Mr. Garcia and Jeff and Ron, and I'm sure you guys all do a great job at what you do. But you know what? We gotta get to the bottom of this. And the only way we do that is if we get in here ourselves and get down on our hands and knees, roll up our sleeves, and Scott is, Scott Campbell's gonna direct us as to where we can find the right third-party scientists that will help mitigate this problem for, not just us, but for the people of Avalon as well, if it is a problem, if in fact it is a problem. But I don't want that water moved until we do do our testing. I want that tank just to sit there. After all, USC has probably a 100,000 gallon tank down below saltwater, they got a whole ocean down there for their fire suppression. From what I understand, you guys are using all those tanks that surround the million gallon tank, that's all fire suppression water, correct? Oh, it's not?
Excuse me, can I interject?
Interesting.
Are there any more technical questions from you?
No, sure. Not from me.
There may be.
You might wanna, you might be called up.
But if this is a Tony Edison question, then Tony can go. Mr. Barnes, you may sit. Thank you.
Yeah, because I saw by upper management from the conservancy, who let me know, this is what he was informed of by Edison, that those tanks, those tanks that surround, those 10,000 gallon tanks and 12 gallon tanks, are gonna be used for fire suppression, and that water was not gonna be drank in the million gallon tank.
So we have a temporary fire suppression system established at USC. Saltwater pumps take the water out of the ocean, linked up to their fire hydrant system. That's how we're handling the fire suppression requirement. The way a million gallon tank's set up, 100,000 gallons is allocated for basically drinking water purposes, and it doesn't just feed the institute, it also feeds over to Two Harbors. The 900,000 gallons that's held in reserve is for the fire suppression requirement at the institute. That's how it works. And so we have about 100,000 gallons worth of temporary storage, it's essentially for drinking water purposes. Doesn't mean during a fire that you couldn't use that water for fire suppression, but that's not what it's been established for. What we have established for fire suppression is temporary saltwater pumps.
What are all the tank, what are the 12 tanks that surround the million gallon tank for? Once again.
They're 10,000 gallons apiece, we've got 100,000 gallons allocated, 10 of them allocated for the purposes of drinking water. We gotta serve Two Harbors, we have to serve the institute during this construction phase. The million gallon tank's gonna be out of service. The other three are for, like I said, the last portion of the water. We know we're gonna get down into sediment, all that kind of stuff, and we're gonna have to drain in there, and we'll dispose of it properly under our work plan that we've submitted to the EPA.
Why would, why would you send the million gallon tank water to us and then fill up these other little tanks with fresh water and feed it to the people of?
No misunderstanding. The 100,000 gallons worth of temporary tanks we have out there has been filled up with million gallon tank water.
Okay.
And it's gone through a sanit, we have to sanitize them, they have to go through that. Purposes, we've been doing that for the past three weeks, four weeks, getting them ready for service. So when we are down to a point where a million gallon tank's drained, they're actually ready for service to provide drinking water. And that water came from a million gallon tank.
Thank you for answering my questions, I appreciate it.
I have a question on the analysis. Let's say tomorrow we said, oh, we want to rally together and do this testing thing. How long would it take to mobilize that concept? And how long does the analysis take when you send it to Georgia or wherever you said?
Sure. So generally, it takes about 14 days, but we can accelerate that. We've talked with the laboratory, just for this specific condition. We can probably get analytical results back within four or five days of collecting the sample.
So, I'm sorry, so the soonest we'd probably be able to do the water sampling would be when?
Ten days. We're ready to go.
I think his answer was, once you do the sampling.
Four, five days.
Excuse me. Just for the record, we've already contacted three firms, if council's direction, we're ready to go. Okay. And the standard testing is, once you take the water, it's two weeks, but you can do accelerated for about four days, it just costs more. But again, if that's council's direction on the action, the general business, we're ready to go.
And about approximately how much would that be? Do we have any idea?
Yes, I have one bid, which was for two weeks, it would be about $1,800.
Okay.
That was two samples, that's include travel time. The samples themselves are only $80 each, but it's the testing portion that is the expensive part.
And that was a 14-day turnaround?
That was a 14-day turnaround.
So it'll be like double for the four-day turnaround?
Again, I've been.
Typically double.
Yeah. Yeah. When I learned tonight for the first time that the tanks might be drained in a week, I sent out an email to all my people saying, what's your timeline and how much? And I haven't heard back yet. So, but we can have someone, again, if it's council's direction, you know, I'm gonna say Thursday, we can have someone here mobilized and ready to go. If not tomorrow, but again, we need direction on that.
I'm finding everything very interesting, and I'm wondering if there's anybody that's sitting out here, if you don't mind getting questions from other people. Thank you.
Most of you know I work in the water industry, so I'm interested in this, and I had about a dozen questions, but I'm gonna let other people ask some of them. But I want to start with a couple real basic ones directing to you. What type of filters are installed? Could you describe them? What filter media are these? Nano-filters, are they particle filters, are they cartridge filters? And you said you're removing one micron sized particles, but what exactly are you filtering? Obviously, you're not filtering PCBs, so what is it that you're filtering? And then, same thing, how are you cleaning these filters? What are you doing with them afterwards? So I guess my first question's dealing basically with that, the filters themselves. What are you sampling besides PCBs? What are you trying to filter out? Why the big inconsistency with the lawsuit by the former employee and the level of PCBs? And the low level now, where do they go if they're not being filtered out? What have you done to treat them, to remove them from the tank? Same thing too with basically the sediment at the bottom of the tank. What's going to happen to the dregs, basically? What's in there? And if you're putting them into temporary tanks, what's happening to those temporary tanks? And what precautions are you taking when you are filtering out what's left at the bottom of the tank? So if you can kind of start with those filter sampling issues.
I think I've got much of that. And unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to give you all of that, because I just don't know. When we specked out the sample, the filters, we specked out a one micron filter, because it's the lowest readily available bag filter. So the media is a bag filter, as I understand it, that was, that's what was specked out, but there are many ways, many different types of nano filtration, like one micron filtration. So I would recommend that Edison get, oh, sorry.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
I would recommend that that information get back to you by the, we can get that information from Edison engineers that installed it, created it. As far as the filtration, again, this is, I will have more direct information, but in our questioning of the operators, there's no pressure drop across that filter. What that means is the filters aren't capturing anything, there is no sediment or suspended solids of consequence that are clogging the filter. When we talk about a pressure drop, if you can imagine a bag filter or any kind of filter, your car, your air filter in your car, when it gets gunked up, it takes a lot of pressure to push air or water through it, that's the pressure. And you have a high pressure on one side and a low pressure on the other, that's the pressure drop. Typically, what you'll do in a maintenance program is you'll wait until the pressure hits something like 15 PSI or 20 PSI across that filter, and then you'll know that it's clogged and it's time to change. From, again, this is anecdotal, and I think this information is coming from the engineers operating, but when I asked them this question, there have not, has not been significant pressure buildup. And in fact, there was so little pressure buildup that they went ahead and took the filters out to see if, what was happening, just to ensure that they were functioning. I don't know the results of that. And typically, the filters you, again, I'm gonna speak a little term, but you're not cleaning them and replacing them, they get properly disposed of. Tony, you might be able to talk more about the sediment at the bottom of the tank and where it is disposition, once it goes into a temporary tank. But before I stand down, did that answer most of the questions that I can?
Does it start?
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm certainly not gonna be able to answer your questions, probably in the detail that you're asking, around what are we going to do with the sediment. We've filed a work plan with the EPA, and they have agreed with our work plan. I'm not the project manager, I have a project manager that is working exclusively on this project. We've employed contract services, contractors to perform this work for us that are experienced in dealing with this type of lining and the sediment that we're ultimately gonna pull out from it. But I, my point is, I guess, it's going to be disposed of properly. It's not something we're just gonna, you know, willy-nilly, okay, we got the sediment out, let's put the new lining in. We have to handle that with environmental policies and rules and regulations, and we're gonna do it that way.
Almost sounds like a hazmat thing to me. Working, getting that sediment out of the bottom and send it off to different agencies, it almost sounds like a hazmat situation. You get that, you put it in barrels, you dispose of it at the right facility.
You're familiar with the process.
That's what it kind of sounds like to me, I don't know. I'm not the scientist, but you have a word?
Yeah. The exact protocol?
I would like to find out.
Is similar to that. You know, we will handle it, the way we handle all hazardous waste material, but, you know, much more under the guidelines of a work plan that we've submitted to the EPA.
Sounds like, sounds like a little hazmat stuff, okay.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I'm on 217, Collette Dussel, Alcon Norwood, for the lawsuit, which I think is actually promoting everyone's minds, when it comes to a concern about contaminants in our water. Many of us read the complaint letter, which detailed numerous instances of questions raised regarding materials that were in or near groundwater or the tanks. And there's also new rumors floating around town that the lawsuit was settled and that a nondisclosure was required of the claimant. So I think everyone would much appreciate having some information about what happened with that.
All right, so, let's face it, I anticipated this question. And unfortunately, I'm gonna disappoint. The litigation has been resolved, and any further information around that is protected with the confidentiality agreement. I cannot share any more than that, and it's protected, sorry.
And I will represent to the council on the community that I talked with, Norris Bishden and I have traded information, and he confirmed that the case has been settled, but that there is a confidentiality provision that prohibits any information about that settlement from being disclosed.
Edison's request? Edison's request? Who requested a nondisclosure agreement?
Who, what?
Edison's. Not a thing.
I don't know if that's on the record, so we need to repeat the question, please.
The question was, who requested the confidentiality provision? I would assume it's Edison, but I do not have that specific information from Mr. Bishden.
Is that?
Again, it's protected under a confidentiality agreement, I can't speak to it anymore. Sorry.
Can we find that information out?
It's probably part of the confidentiality provision.
So this is probably gonna be redundant, you're gonna tell me, okay, but I just have a question. I know that there was a settlement, okay? But did any, but does any of that lawsuit proceed with regard to, you know, it was a wrongful termination, but the other stuff about, does that still get investigated, or is the whole thing dead, I guess is my question?
Okay, yeah, it's gonna be redundant. The litigation has been resolved.
The total fight. Allegations, litigation, everything is done.
Specific to that litigation case, it's been resolved.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
You know what we really need is, it would be nice to have information on exactly what was done when, what was done with all of the sediment that was vacuumed out of the tank before any of this was brought out into the public. Where, can we get billing statements and billing and invoices as to where all that hazardous waste went, possibly? And how did the PCBs get on the ground outside of the tank? Is it just because, like, you just vacuumed them out and just, and just, you know, haphazardly dumped them into barrels, thinking like, oh, this is just muck on the bottom of the tank, or we can just, you know, just squirt it out of the ground? I mean, can you, can you come up with those billing statements and those, and those payment invoices from whoever the company was that did that cleanup?
Be quite honest, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know that we could produce that, actually that we're obligated to produce that.
You're not obligated to produce that?
I said, I don't know if we're obligated to produce that, even at your request.
Would you be kind enough to check and see?
Certainly.
And see if you can produce that information for the people that own the company that you work for?
Certainly.
Okay. That would be nice. And, okay, yeah. And also, how did the PCBs wind up on the ground? Would you, see if you can find out that information as well? And share that with the general public or the council?
Didn't you do that?
Again, I'm not sure how to even respond to that. I'm not sure we're able to deduce the exact moment or how it ultimately ended up in the soil. We know at the end of all this, that we have a remediation plan that we're gonna have to go through to deal with the soil outside of the million gallon tank. Doesn't make sense to go do it right now, because we're gonna be refurbishing the inside of it, and there is a possibility that ends up, more ends up outside. Hoping that doesn't happen, but quite frankly, it would not make sense to go. Hoping that doesn't happen, but quite frankly, it would not make sense to go remediate any kind of soil and put a plant in place and then open a million gallon tank where we have coltar lining and then have to do it again.
Who's going to be doing the work on the, on the million gallon tank when it comes down to removing the sediment? Do you have, do you have a contractor?
I don't have the contractor name on the top of my head. I know MCS engineer, contractors are doing some of the work. I don't know that they're the ones doing the actual lining removal.
Seems like it might be hazmat since it seems to be hazardous waste. I'm not sure if it is or not, but I sure would like to know. And I think we're going to find that out sooner or later. So how many, how many samples are we, are we going to talk about exactly what we're going to test and how many samples that we're going to take as a governing body up here for testing?
There is an agenda item on that matter. And it's, it's, it's general business two. If it were the council's pleasure, we could advance that item right now and skip over the actions so that you're consistent.
Well, okay. Let me ask if there's other comments from the community. Okay, we have a couple of others, and then, and then we'll... Kathleen, you want to come up first?
Kathleen Carlisle, 311 East Whitley. So, from Mr. Barnes, so there is sediment on the bottom of the tank. Did you test the sediment on the bottom of the tank, your company? Or just the water in those pipes you were talking about?
We did not collect samples of the sediment at the bottom of the tank. What we think is the sediment that was at the bottom of the tank that was vacuumed out is something that we sampled in the soil.
Okay. And you found PCBs in that?
That's correct.
At what line?
Have we had to report? The numbers, I don't have, I have the report right here.
So we can get those?
Absolutely. The council has that.
Okay.
So the report that we have there is not only the water samples, but the soil samples as well?
No. Given you are the water samples, what I understood is that you, in the last session, that you had a copy of our report, that a summary of all of the data. And it shows the soil, the location of the soil samples, it shows the chemical.
You got that too, didn't you, that geosystem?
I think yes.
So if we know that there's sediment on the bottom of this tank, and there's a really good chance it's contaminated with PCBs, because even if it was put in containers and those containers were just set on the dirt, and now the dirt has PCBs in it, that sounds like a pretty good proof that there's PCBs in that sediment that was on the bottom of the tank. So what I don't understand is how, it's like if somebody gave me a glass of water and they put sediment on the bottom of it that was filled with PCBs, how can I know I can safely drink the water? I've heard that, oh, if you don't disturb the sediments, you're fine. Well, how can you suction out that water and not create a current that disturbs the sediments? How can you know those sediments aren't coming up? And if they are, how can you be assured that the type of filters you're using are working? So that's one question. And then, I'm interested to know the exact date, if we could get the exact dates of when Edison started moving water? Because they say that they don't know how much water is left, and they don't know how much they moved. It's just really hard for me to believe that a company that's moving water wouldn't keep track of something like that. I mean, he said it takes about 18,000 gallons a day, and he's got about a week left. I can already see that that's about 126,000 gallons, so is that how much is left? I'm curious as to why you would keep track of something like that. And the other thing that concerns me is that he specifically said that it went into Wrigley Reservoir. The reservoir doesn't look that much fuller to me. I don't know, maybe a million gallons doesn't show up that much, or 800,000 that maybe have been moved so far. So if, then he said it was being put into a bypass line, but then he said that was going into Wrigley Reservoir. So I'd like to have that clarified. Is the bypass line coming straight into town? Because that would be real handy if you knew you had contaminated water and you put it in a bypass line and we drink it every day, because we use about 200,000 gallons a day, so all the evidence would be gone. So I'd like to know about the movement of water when it started. And I personally would hope that you guys don't let them start again.
So, so what you're actually, so what you actually, Ms. Hill, what you actually have just requested is possibly to get the log, the logbooks from the tanker trucks that were hauling the water so we can see exactly how much water they have hauled and exactly what was in those tanker trucks? Would that be helpful to your question?
Yes. And when they started? Because it's just a funny thing. I know nothing about this, and it was, oh, at least a month ago, it seems, and I remember brushing my teeth and saying to my husband, "The water tastes funny." I mean, we notice things like that. You notice smells, you're used to something. And I just remember noting that it was either a month or five weeks ago, and I thought, this is strange, and then knew nothing about any of this.
This is, I have a question for Mr. Height by the chance, and I'm not sure, one of my constituents asked me this. There's two lines that go into the million, or that seemingly go into the million gallon tank from the west side of, I mean, the nine million gallon tank, Wrigley Reservoir, from the west side of the reservoir. One of them is blue and one of them is white. Can you tell me what those two lines are?
Well, we got a lot of questions out here on the table. And I want to make, make a correction. I didn't say I didn't know how much was left in the tank. Approximately about 160,000 gallons. Now, the other part is, I'm absolutely willing to provide the day that we started moving water. We wanted to start moving water on February 26th. That's the day we were able, or I'm sorry, January 26th, that was the day we got to go by the permitting agencies that allow us to do the work. And we got the saltwater filtration, or saltwater pump system in for fire suppression. Shortly thereafter, we started moving water. The exact date, again, I'm not the project manager, I'm not the one over here watching and overseeing this project take place. I absolutely can get that information. I absolutely can get the information on how much water has been moved from a million gallon tank over to Wrigley Reservoir. Another point of clarification, I want to make sure it's clear. I called it a bypass valve. It's an air vent that feeds directly into Wrigley Reservoir. Point is, it's going into Wrigley Reservoir.
Okay. There's two lines. One's blue and one's white. What?
That I don't know the answer to.
Okay.
But I want to make sure I address at least some of these questions that you had put out there.
Thank you.
There was a technical question.
Can anybody answer that question for me? It might be here.
One moment. I want to make sure that we get her questions addressed. There was a technical question that she put out there around how come I can, you know, if I have sediment at the bottom of the tank and then there's water above it, how come that doesn't ultimately end up being just in PCBs? So I want to make sure we don't miss that question. Andrew?
Okay. So we're going to get a little bit beyond my area of expertise in fluid dynamics, but essentially, is the volume of water that's leaving the tank is, is small compared to the volume that's in the tank. So we're not, that's why we're not setting up large currents that will stir up sediment. The other issue is that the outflow pipe is actually several feet off the bottom of the tank. So that is my hydrogeologist's interpretation of fluid dynamics. But what I can tell you is that the sampling we do is approximately 20 feet past the tank in the pipeline. So it is a direct, directly after the MGT. That's where our first sample is collected. We've not found any detectable levels of PCBs. If they had dissolved in the water, or if the sediment had been kicked up and we had particulates in the water, that would be the media, that would be where the PCBs would be attached to, is the particulates. We still, all of that material, whatever we collect in the water, sediment and water itself, is being tested. So it goes to a laboratory, they digest all of that. If there are PCBs on sediment in that sample, it would be detected. We don't find it at the levels that are, at or below the MCT.
What are you doing at the bottom of the tank? I just want to look at the water.
So that is, that's an engineering question. I'm not going to answer that. I, I know that they're, they're.
So remember, I said there's, somebody suggested 12. There's actually 13 tanks up there. There's 30,000 gallons worth of tanks that will not be for drinking water, right? So we got 100,000 gallons allocated for drinking water, they're temporary tanks set up outside the million gallon tank. We also have three temporary tanks that are going to be established, but that are established to take that last bit of water, put it in there, and we'll dispose it appropriately. It's not something we're going to consume. Regarding your question on the pipes, I even asked Ron. Ron can come up here and answer the question. He doesn't know. I don't know. You know, the two different pipes, one could be a bypass pipe or a discharge, but they're, I don't know the exact answer. We'll have to get back to you on it.
Okay, yeah, please do, because it's a pretty...
Remember, I told you I'm an electric guy, right?
Well, you guys did a pretty good job with that, too. Yeah, it's a pretty important question because one of the pipes is the pipe that the water's being dumped into, and the other one, I don't know what.
Well, you're talking at Wrigley Reservoir. I thought you were talking a million gallon tank.
Yeah, it's Wrigley Reservoir.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we were talking a million gallon tank. I'm familiar with kind of the discharge pipes and the supply pipe. And you're saying there's two pipes at Wrigley Reservoir.
Wrigley Reservoir on the west side of the reservoir.
The one that we're putting in is an air vent. It's a, it's a means to not go out in the middle of the reservoir, open the hatch, have a hose, and, and walk across and put the water in the reservoir that way. We're putting it through an air vent. It achieves the same purpose. It's going into the reservoir.
What is the other pipe for? Do you know that?
I don't.
Okay. Maybe you can find that out and let us know.
Is it connected to the, what was the other thing you called, the one that goes around the thing? The bypass? Is that one connected to the bypass, I wonder? Okay. Ken Foster told me it was the other day, but of course, it's too technical for me to remember. Other questions? Yes. Oh, Mr. Carlisle and Ms. Sinsky.
I just wanted to know what else was tested for. Mainly was heavy metal ions and chromates. And if it was tested, were they near or at any limits for any other product that was tested in the water?
So the scope of Geosintech's work was specific to total suspended solids and PCBs. I know that Edison, as a water purveyor, is required by the state to do what's called consumer confidence reports, and so the whole litany of analyzing, they sample for analyzed regularly. So if there are additional data, then you might be looking for that. It'd be the only other place I know of.
And Allison?
This is kind of a follow-up question to Dave's question, but I was wondering about what was being sent to the lab in Savannah for analysis. You said you were testing for PCBs and total suspended solids, but did anybody test for total dissolved solids? And what happened? Why is there this big conflict between this 0.5 part per billion maximum contaminant level and the amount that was claimed to be in the water from samples that were taken related to this lawsuit at 50 parts per million, which are significantly different number? So I was wondering, what happened to the PCBs? Why is the number so different? Why is nothing showing up in the testing yet it did during the lawsuit or the claims in the lawsuit that were made? Also, is there anything with this water sampling? Is it time, the chain of custody, the temperature? Is anything changing the results? 14 days is a long time for analysis. And water samples are usually, you know, we're usually concerned about the chain of custody and what temperature they're kept at, and how they're being shipped, and how the samples are actually being taken. So I'm concerned about what else is being tested besides PCBs and total suspended solids? Why the big difference in the total dissolved solids? And is there anything that could be changing these results?
Okay, for, again, for Geosintech's study, our analyses are limited to total suspended solids and PCBs. And there's total PCBs by aero core. So we separate them by the different, by the component. PCBs is a family of compounds. And so when we talk about PCBs, there's generally, there's actually about 501 different PCBs, but they get grouped into aero cores. That's the technical term. And it has to do with their chemical composition. So when we send these to the laboratory, we're actually analyzing for the aero cores, the five principal aero cores. TDS is actually done as part of the consumer confidence reporting. So that, those data should be available. They should be sent to you as a consumer by your provider, I think, on a quarterly basis. So you should have those data. With respect to the handling of the samples, it's very, it's correct, very important to maintain strict, not only custody of the samples, but preservation of the samples. So all of our samples are shipped with ice, and we maintain, they are maintained at a temperature of less than four degrees Celsius. And that is the generally accepted principle in our, in our industry and for laboratories. When the laboratory receives our samples, the first thing they do is pull out what's called the chain of custody. We've signed the chain of custody. We give it to the FedEx. FedEx sends it along its way. The laboratory opens that up. Sorry. They inspect the cooler first. We have a custody seal on the cooler. If that custody seal is broken, the laboratory notifies us. That means somebody has opened the cooler, potentially tampering with the samples. If that ever happens, we throw those samples away, we re-sample. So there's a custody seal on both the sample bottles inside the cooler as well as the cooler. Laboratory pulls out the chain of custody, they measure the temperature of a blank that we've put into that cooler with it. So we have a control sample of water. The laboratory measures the temperature of that, and they report back to us, and you'll see it in the reports here, on all of the analytical reports, the laboratory will spec, will stipulate the temperature of those samples upon receipt. And if it's above four degrees Celsius, they'll notify us. Again, we'll just, we'll throw those samples out, we will re-sample. So as far as I'm concerned, the integrity of the samples is consistent and maintained from the time they leave our hands to the time the laboratory receives them. And I'm confident that all of our procedures are beyond, beyond industry standard. We comply with industry standard protocol, sampling, handling, headspace analysis. In this case, we're not doing VOCs, so headspace isn't that important, preservation, et cetera. So I, I don't think that there's anything that we are doing to the samples that changes them from the time we take the water out of the pipe. The question you ask is, why are they different than somebody else's analyses? I would have to know how they collect their, their samples in order to answer that question. And unless they have the documentation that we have, the chain of custody, the seals, the temperature, the verification from the laboratory, then I can't compare our strict standards with what they did. So I, that unfortunately, I just, I can't, for me, I don't think they're disappearing. So I just can't compare those two data sets.
Mr. Barnes, can I, can I just, I might be in the weeds here, but I'm confused with some of the scientific, scientific aspect. The difference between testing suspended or dissolved or solids? I mean, obviously, I know what each of those means, but how are you testing again? And can, and can you tell me what exactly that means?
Sure. So the, let me just articulate the difference between total suspended solids and total dissolved solids. The easiest way to think of this is a total dissolved solid is like salt. When you put salt in water, the sodium chloride, they actually dissociate. So you don't have a sodium chloride molecule, but you have sodium and you have chloride. And they're, and they're going on. So that's a dissolved, that is a total dissolved solid. And you'll have magnesium and iron and manganese and all sorts of minerals that comprise healthy water. Those are your total dissolved solids. Total suspended solids, if you could put them under a microscope, you could see them. So that's really the big difference. Those are particulates, and they can be of any size. You can see down to about 40 microns. That's your, the limit of your vision. So anything that you can, we can filter in the laboratory, and they'll use a filter of a specific size. I actually don't know what the size of filter is. But that's how they get the, that analysis. They'll filter the water and whatever, they'll measure the weight of the solids that remains on that filter. And that tells you what the total suspended solid content is. Does that make sense?
Any other comments or questions? Kathleen, one more?
I just have a question in mind. Kathleen Carlisle, so are you saying that PCBs never become dissolved solids?
Never is a big word. Generally, we're, we're, we don't dissolve the water, especially if you're in presence of hydrogen. Everything dissolves to some, to some degree, but we can't, can't detect.
But we can't, can't detect.
Councilmember, do you? Right now, we're good? We'll open up some discussion?
Good evening, Honorable Members of the City Council and our families that live in Avalon and Catalina Island. My name is Ronald Garcia. I'm the Region Manager of Public Affairs. And I've always worked with electricity. Water and gas is new to me. I want to share that what I know about water is my six brothers and I, after playing football game, would drink the water and spray each other and, and have water fights. I add Crystal Light to it now because I like the taste better. I tried walking on it. I couldn't do it. So please don't ask me any questions about water. I also want to share that one of the number one goals, or it is the number one goal of Edison Company, is that everybody should be safe around our products. So if you should see hanging or dangling wires, please call 1-800-611-1911, but first call 911. Wanted to share with you also that, uh, our goal on the island is to provide a safe, reliable, dependable, adequate supply of electricity, gas, and water. So these things are new to me. I'm going to take ownership for not notifying you about the meeting on Two Harbors. Had I had more experience, you would have been there. So it's my oops, continuous improvement. So let me grow with you. I want to say to you, Councilman Sampson, thank you for saying you like me. I was wondering about that, but I do like you, too. And I also want to say that we do, this group of people here, do respect the passion that you have and the goals you have for meeting the questions of your constituents. We too have that very same goal, so we're glad to partner with you. Also want to share with you that, uh, to the families in Avalon, thank you very much for conserving water. You're making a huge difference. It's amazing what we can do when we partner together and you're just proof that we're doing a really solid job together, the families of Avalon, uh, meeting the water conservation goals. Lastly, to the families of Edison Company, I think there's 55 or 60 of us that live on the island. Their work is appreciated and I want to tell you that I know that the council appreciates you because I heard you say we do a good job with electricity. So the families of Edison Company, your neighbors, appreciate you for all the fine work you do on the island and in Catalina. So lastly, uh, Councilman Sampson, you asked a number of questions at the last meeting and I have a list of six things that you asked just to review with you. I want to share that I think, no, I'm sure that we covered all of them with the exception of, uh, what are we doing for future water bonds? And you asked about, let's see, how's it go? Okay, follow up with SCE regarding the status of SCE's efforts to approach the appropriate regulatory agencies about, oh, no, this one deals with the potential of expanding discharge permits for the desalinization plant. I sent you an article today that was in the LA Times. It was about Santa Barbara and the challenges they're facing with their desalinization plant. The real short answer is, uh, to establish a new plant or major modifications in an existing plant equals a new permit. And in fact, because of the protection of the aquamarine life in the, in the ocean, the, the guidelines are even tougher than they were before. So to get a permit for minor modifications to an existing plant, that can be done. It would take some time, but it can be done to get a new permit. That's going to take a lot of time. I could read you a whole page on what I've learned from the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, but instead, I think I'll send it to you, Mr. Harvey, and have you pass it on to the council. But you'll read how difficult it is to get a new permit. And if you read the article in the LA Times today about Santa Barbara's efforts and other cities' efforts to build a salinization plant, you'll realize it's expensive, it's going to take a lot of time, and, uh, and it's going to go on the backs of the residents. And so they're thinking, pray for rain. So anyway, with that out of the way, we also want to share that you talked about, uh, what are we going to do to look in partnership with the city of Avalon for, uh, water bond grants? Want to share with you that our team of Transmission and Distribution, Advanced Technology Government Affairs, Legislative Affairs out of Sacramento Office and Local Public Affairs, and Regulatory Affairs and the Law Department, we reviewed the Legislative Affairs Analysis of Water Bond, the Draft Water Bond Spending Schedule, and the preparation of draft guidelines, as well as potential consultants who may be able to assist us with the, and who have the expertise in the area of competitive water bond grant applications. And so our next step is to get together with those experts that we're working with and then work with you to come up with how we can partner to get some money over to the island. Ron Height, our, our, our District Manager, and by the way, I think the world of him. He does an incredible job. Has been on the island for 10 years. He's raised his children here. They graduated from the high schools and he works around the clock to make sure that we have a reliable, adequate supply of electricity, gas, and water with all of his challenges. But anyway, he recently attended a two-day workshop, Wednesday and Thursday. It dealt with water drought and, um, he met many heads of many state agencies and he too has contacts that he's working on to help us identify where we can go with, with requests for water bonds Prop 1 monies. So I think that pretty much covers all the things that you talked about. You asked for Jeff Reports, so it could go on the web and you now have that. And, um, if there's any questions of me that don't have to deal with water, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Uh, oh, and lastly, Mr. Sampson, the reason for so many changes in public affairs is we have an older group of employees. I'm one of them. I'm 69 years old with 47 years old. I volunteered to come to the island. My children are raised and, uh, and so I can spend time over here. I'm over here maybe three, four days a week. And in fact, today I met with one of your constituents who asked me and made a suggestion about how we can improve our notification for outages for planned service interruptions for reliability upgrades. So I'll pass that on to you. And, uh, so anyway, I, I wear an Edison vest or a wet Edison shirt. The people in the island or Avalon who see me, please stop, ask me questions or concern, share them with me. I'll make sure they get back. I'm in a mode of continuous improvement and again, my, uh, my oops for not notifying you.
Amen.
Thank you.
I would, I would also like to thank Mr. Garcia, Ben Harvey, Councilmember Sampson, um, for the rapid movement that was done on Thursday, um, to respond to the, stopping the delivery of the water. I know it probably took an act of God and Congress and everybody else to get, get that in motion on, on Thursday. So I thank you very much. I know that made Councilmember Sampson happy that they stopped that and, and, um, I think it's a sigh of relief for the community at that point.
Yeah, and also I wanted to thank you for the wonderful protocol and the professionalism of this meeting. We were anticipating it could get much tougher and it was very tough, but nevertheless, these gentlemen over here prepared well to address your concerns and just want to applaud everybody for partnering to make this a better place to live and work and raise our families.
We're not done yet, Ron.
Thank you anyway.
Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Okay, well, do we want to tackle our direction or do, um, or do we want to just continue to go through the council agenda? You want to take item two or move on?
It seems like we're already on the topic and it's pretty fresh. Everyone else is handling it. Let's just move right to it.
Okay, let's slide to.
Okay, so we, uh, anticipated you would likely want to provide us with some direction following the presentations from Edison this evening, so we agendized this item. Um, you've already discussed a couple, um, potential actions that you could consider, one being, um, something that Edison, I think, has already agreed to as part of their presentation, which is the third-party water, uh, sample. Um, the other would be, uh, what Councilmember Sampson was speaking to, which was the timing, excuse me, timing of the, uh, delivery of water and, uh, any type of cessation that you might want to see. As, as a reminder, um, of course, the city i- is not a regulatory body overseeing Southern California Edison. I know that you're all aware of that. Um, however, there are other agencies that do oversee Edison and their operations here on the island, among them, the California Public Utility Commission and also the State Water Resources Board, among others. There, there's a number depending on the type of utility we're talking about. So a direction might be to ask us to interface with one of those agencies and make a request on behalf of the city as a, as a suggestion. There, there could be other actions that you want to see as well. And of course, with majority direction, we would do whatever your direction was.
This is in reference to testing?
Testing, transport of water, um, interface with any type of, of regulatory body, questions you may have.
I'd like, I'd like to see water stop being moved until we can have it tested. And, um, I'd like to be there when the test samples are drawn and I'd like to also have a say-so in where, um, those samples are drawn from as well. And that is when we, well, at a different point, I guess we're going to refer to Mr. Campbell to find out exactly who we're going to use, use for that. But that's, that was just a request that I would feel comfortable with and my constituency would appreciate that until we figure out exactly what's going on with this water. I mean, even though we're getting near the, the end of the tank, I think we need to, we need to test what's in there. At this point, since we're getting there, I feel comfortable with that. And I think, um, the people that are watching this meeting, uh, would feel comfortable with that as well.
So I have some questions. Joe and everyone. Um, I think the recommend, one of the recommendations that Mr. Barnes said was, I was imagining two guys going in there, turning on the spigot, getting the water, sending it to their labs. It comes back and then we go, oh, column A and column B both say the same thing and that's great and hopefully nothing's in the water and we go away and we're happy. I think that would be the best thing. I think because of, it's kind of a lack of trust over the last so much, many times, it's very sad that there's not a lot of confidence, you know, hasn't been a lot of confidence in Edison. And I think, I'm hoping and praying that by doing the testing, it would put closure to this issue so that we could go on. Um, because I would like to feel happy that it's not going to be PCBs and we're going to be great. So whatever way to do that, I think, great, I know that, Joe, you say you want to give advice on where and how and whatever it's tested. I would think we would leave that to the professional that we hire to say, I mean, you could probably talk to him, but, but to say, no, to get to this issue, this is what we need to do. And we're, you know, so I don't know, I'm not a scientist or a hydrologist. But, and I don't know, there probably wouldn't be any problem with you being there, so I don't have a problem with that either. What I think is, is going, once we decide if, if we do want to test, the other question about stopping the water from being taken out of the tank, um, I know that's a trickier issue and, uh, probably, yeah, a tougher issue. Because they're wanting to get along with their business and get the, and, you know, not let their permit expire and all of that. But I know as a community, we're concerned with that water going into the water supply. So I don't, I'm kind of lost on that. Because Edison doesn't have to, they can say, I'm doing it tomorrow, there's no way to stop them. Correct?
Yeah, the, the city does, does not regulate them. However, you know, what I think, what we've seen is that the city is obviously one of the more important, if not the most important customer to Edison on the island because we represent the majority of people living on the island. So your, your voice is allowed. So when, when you make a request, um, of the regulatory agencies, it's, it's responded to and it's heard.
But what's the timeliness of that?
The timeliness of, of making a request and getting a response? Well, depending on your direction, of course, if it's an urgent request, I would get on the phone, uh, first thing in the morning and, uh, and, and prepare a written, uh, follow-up to, to the conversation that I, that I had with the regulator. If that was your direction to, to move urgently, I would do so. We, we have, um, connections, obviously, in the CUC office and people that, uh, know us and we could, we could do that.
Sadly, I, you know, yeah, I mean sadly, like you say, is, if that's our only option. I mean, I do feel bad because the expense of delaying all of this, because I believe there's always, already an expense to not doing what you're trying to get done and those costs will go, be put back on our shoulders.
Mayor, just for your consideration also, one thing that we spoke to, um, I think maybe you or maybe Councilmember Sampson, a bit about is, you know, we're, we're of course aware that the, the County Department of Regional Planning issues the permits, uh, for this work. And we, as you well know, have a very strong relationship with the County Supervisor's Office and, uh, we, we've been in touch with them about the permit. They're, they're familiar with it. And so if you, uh, so directed, we also could discuss the potential for, if you will, a friendly amendment, uh, to the, to the permit, which might be another way to redress, uh, excuse me, to address the, the concerns that you have. So that's another mechanism at your disposal if you so direct us.
Okay, but turnaround time? What is the turnaround time or something like that?
Well, um, hard to speculate. I can tell you that I know the County Supervisor's Office is watching this meeting, so there's probably some phone calls and some email flying around. Um, they, they understand the sensitivity. I would imagine that if I called first thing in the morning, we probably could get some answers back pretty quickly.
What, what is Edison's timeframe to get everything done and up and going? What's your timeframe we're looking at to finish this project? So I came here prepared to tell you that we're moving water tomorrow. I can tell you, I can make a recommendation to be wasteful with that water. And that is we're to a point where we could move it to a different direction, facilitate our project. I can't make that decision tonight. I'd rather not do that. I don't think it makes sense to waste 100,000 gallons or so of water that is, can be consumed. Doesn't make sense to me. It's why we made the choice to move the water the way we did, not moving it towards the West End. But quite frankly, we want to move our project along. We intend to move our project along. Starting tomorrow, I'm going to make a recommendation, one of two things, that we're going to continue to move water to a water trucking operation, or we're going to move the water to the West End direction and continue to make our project move along. So when does your permit expire? Or when, when is all that? That's what I'm asking. Is it, you have a six-month permit? You have a four-month permit? There's multiple permits involved with this project. So it's, and we're working on an emergency permit right now to start the project. Allows you for how long? The emergency permit? Three weeks, four weeks, two months? Around November timeframe, but it's going to take a long time to do this project. We don't see it wrapping up until around the September timeframe. That's assuming no delays. We're already delayed of going on two weeks now. Um, and it also is dependent on, we talked to you about the floor liner, or the flooring. Could be a partial replacement, it could be a full replacement, and that's going to add significant time if we have to do a full replacement.
So the permit is for the whole Million Gallon Tank project?
Exactly. And there's multiple permits in play here, right? You know, it's not just one agency.
Right, yeah.
How can we stop the movement of water? Scott? Can we? Can we?
We have a closed session item to discuss the only legal, I mean, the only way unless they agree to do it is to initiate a lawsuit against Edison for an injunction. We can discuss that in closed session.
Okay.
That's, I've noticed this for closed session discussion.
Can, if I remember correctly, and I'm, I don't have my notes in front of me, but I met with Mr. Height during the election process and we had a conversation to help me understand more about water. And if I understand it correctly, in the winter months, which we're just kind of coming out of, the D-SAL plant can, for the most part, produce 100% of the water of the needs that we have in town. And I know that our, you know, carrier numbers have been up and our visitor counts have been up, but I guess what I'm wondering is, are we pulling any water from the reservoir now? From that 9 million gallon tank now to service the needs? Or are we 100% on the D-SAL plant right now?
That's a good question. Right now, the community here in Avalon is using about 170,000 to 180,000 gallons a day. That plant can produce 200. Uh, so the D-SAL plant is meeting 100% of the needs here in Avalon. However, Hamilton Cove is connected directly to Wrigley Reservoir and not the town system. So the only water coming out of Wrigley currently is going to Hamilton Cove.
So let me understand that. So- So then if the total amount of water in the million gallon tank left is about 180,000, that's one day's worth of water?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so that's what you'd be, the option I guess from Edison is, if you don't want us to deliver it, we'll put it somewhere else. And that's one day of water.
But am I correct in assuming, you're not supposed to assume, that there is water sitting in tank trucks right now, ready to be dumped in tomorrow morning? I mean, some of those tanks are filled up in those 32, 3200 gallon trucks that are out there? Those are all full of water, ready to be dumped, I imagine?
Staged.
Staged, thank you.
So I don't know exactly whether or not they have water in them right now, but the water trucks are not just exclusive to moving water from million gallon tank over to Wrigley Reservoir. So there's some other water trucking operations, if you remember. We've got a problem over on the West End and we're moving water. For other reasons too. So they may have water in them, doesn't mean that they were, they stand ready to go dump them in Wrigley Reservoir.
Okay, thanks, yeah, okay.
I know for a fact that two of the trucks are empty. Or were Thursday afternoon, after they dumped their loads into the Wrigley Reservoir. Witnessing that happening. But there's four trucks online. One of them is up at the Wrigley Reservoir now, and then there's three down at pump station number two, at least as far as I know.
Mayor Tim Wilson? No, no.
Kathleen Carlo. So are we basically saying that the consumers of the water, so the Avalon residents that are consuming this water really don't have a say in stopping or telling Edison, you can't put possibly contaminated water into our reservoir? Only you guys can do that, and even you can't do that unless you go to some state water resources board or the CPUC. Is that correct? Only you guys can ask another agency? So we as a city can't even stop them?
Not unless they say lawsuit and a court orders it.
Okay, so here's my concern. I have a lot of good friends that live at the far West End past the Ithmas. So if they're moving water tomorrow, my friends are getting that water. And they can't stop it, they don't have a city government down there sitting, fighting for them. Apparently, it doesn't make sense that if we're concerned about this water, we should be able to act for our whole island. They, we can stop it into the city of Avalon, but we can't stop it to say Howland's Landing or something, and the tanks are putting it there? So I'd like you to consider that when you're in a closed section. And also, I was just curious about the, if they've ever done a material safety data sheets for the chemical composition of the liner of the million gallon tank? And if they have, if we could get that?
Liner predates the MSDSS by a bunch.
Okay, can we request, request, can we make that request that she just asked for? Material safety data sheet for the lining of the inside of the million gallon tank?
And Ollie's comment was-
Technically, you'd have to go back to the manufacturer. The manufacturer'd have to create it. And who, where are we going to find the manufacturer from the 50s? But, I have two dumb questions.
There's nothing's dumb.
No, well, for me it might be. When you're talking about moving the water a different place, not to the east, but to the west, are you going to move it into tanks or are you going to just dump it?
We move water on this island all the time, through either the system. And lately, at least for the past year that I'm familiar with it, we've had some issues with Howland's well. We have a well up at the airport that requires putting water into the storage tank up there because the well's not working properly. So that's what we're doing. We're moving the water around, we're using trucks to facilitate that. At times, we're taking water from pump house two over to Howland's, the Howland's area, over on the West End, right, to supply the camps. So that's the kind of stuff we're doing outside of just moving water from the million gallon tank over to Wrigley Reservoir.
So, but you weren't talking about just letting the tank run dry and wasting the water?
Right, that's what we don't want to do.
And in fact, I believe they would need a discharge permit.
Discharge permit to do that, because they couldn't just discharge it.
And the bottom line is, we're consuming the water over there too. It's not, it's though that the only thing we're doing is moving water. We're actually, folks over there are consuming it.
Not a lot though.
Not, not, not right now, you're right.
And that's all the question I have for you. Your opening comments when we started, item two, talking about when we take the two samples and we send them out and they're going to come back the same. I believe that's what's going to happen. I mean, I read this report, got my magnifying glass out. I believe that the water we have now is not polluted, is not toxic. And I, if we want to go out there and spend the 3,600 bucks and get it done, if that's by self-confidence for the people, let's do it. But I think it's not going to change anything, I don't think, in my mind.
I, there is definitely a level of mistrust in town. Unfortunately, it's, it is what it is with Edison. That also holds true with a lot of residents at the West End. Whether they said it to you guys in your public discussions or not, I mean, that's what we're hearing from friends, family, constituents, however you want to call it. I would really like to see this level of mistrust resolved so that we can all move forward. And I guess with the, especially with the settlement that has recently happened, and I appreciate that you can't speak to it, but for a majority of the population in Avalon that has read the complaint, that has any understanding of it, it's very difficult to move forward and just go, oh, well, we're never going to know what happened. So I would like to find a way to resolve this mistrust between the residents and Edison. And if that means testing, then I think we need to, we need to do what we need to do. I'm not interested in making your job more difficult, this project that you want to do. I realize and I understand that you, Mr. Edison, you just said that you're going to start moving water tomorrow. So I've heard you loud and clear with that. You do what you need to do, we'll end up doing what we need to do. But at some point, we need to try to resolve the mistrust between us and Edison.
So, so, so what we're asking is for transparency, forthrightness, honesty. And also, we'd like to be more informed when it comes to, when it, the changes in tariffs, allocations, and water transfers. I think that Mr. Garcia comes up here all the time, he can inform us of those things. He can inform the public of those things. It can be posted downtown. That was half, that's what half of this, this whole problem was from, is because we weren't notified. That's where half the whole distrust comes from, is because we weren't notified.
So then, let's provide direction to the staff. It sounds as though, I don't know if we have to vote, vote, but it sounds as though we definitely want to proceed with the water testing? And the other issue taken to closed session, correct?
And I just want to clarify for a discussion we may have in the future is that I am very well aware that we do not have jurisdiction over Edison. I'm very well aware that we cannot tell you what you do. We cannot dictate how you, you know, your transfers of water, what you do with the water. I realize that we are not your regulatory body. I very much understand that. I would like to see the mistrust between the community and Edison resolved. And that's, that's my goal right now.
And we've had meetings with Edison and with upper management. We shared our concerns locally about the lack of information flow. And I think if they hear us and will start having the information flow down to us, it would be very beneficial. And I think we've heard from enough people tonight that Edison recognizes that not inviting us down to Two Harbers was a faux pas. And I think, I don't think that'll happen again in the future. And if we're going to make direction on the water testing, I would suggest that we do it and we also do the quick, wait, fastest?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, I've already, I'm already emailing the companies right now, so.
I believe the majority of the people in this room were here because of the water discussion today. And I'm hoping that when you, you know, you heard, you're hearing what we hear. And hopefully you're finding a little bit of satisfaction in how we're trying to move. So we appreciate that and we want to, you know, thank you. And I want to thank you all, Mr. Barnes. Jeff, you got off without saying anything this time, that's good. And Mr. Edison, okay, and Mr. Edison, Mr. Garcia, we want to thank you. It was very informational, yes. If you keep it short, okay, Iris, let's see. No disrespect intended with that comment.
I'm going to make this very, very short. Number one, and I love you all guys and girls, you were elected to look after us. We're talking water. My daughter grew up drinking water at the Ithmas, we spent a lot of years in there. So I'm terrified, there is a problem. You keep talking about the trust. There is nothing that I like, we like to do more than trust, whoever you are. Even us on this. But transparency is zero. And I know you guys are doing a good job. You were tall enough to discuss about the lawsuit. The lawsuit happened, not because Edison said, oops, there is bad water. No, somebody, if I might use the term, blew the whistle. And that's how everything started. So they got sued before. I understand the city doesn't have the authority to tell them. But then unfortunately, there are lawsuits. What I'm really afraid of is that we have to go to a different department, the government, who will look after us. And if it goes public, that's what I fear the most. It will hurt the town. There will be no business. It's one person to say, watch. And I've been so tempted, but it's not a good solution. Like, we have to keep it inside. Again, Ron, you did a great job. I love all the people who work for Edison. It's not their fault, it's somewhere higher. The people who say, don't talk about the lawsuit. I'm sorry, I think it'll be nice to explain, you know, what they did. I think what I read, there was a list of things that should have been done in certain amount of town. Nobody say anything about that. So again, I know that probably you guys want to talk about it, but you can't because you're told, you can't. That's how the legal thing works. I hate it. If you're going to be transparent, be transparent, you know. If I want to say something, just say it. But I am very, very concerned, this is our water. And we pay more money for conserving water. And we're being told to get a drink it. I buy bottled water. Now, the bottled water is not really that safe either, you know, but we have no-
Okay, and there, wrap it up, Iris, wrap it up. We love you. Thank you. Yes, Gina Soldania? Sure.
So Gina Soldania, I just wanted to say thank you very much for listening to your constituents and the swiftness with which you're going to deal with this, the independent review. And thank you, Vicky Rogers. Otherwise, we would have never known. Thank you.
Okay, bye. Okay. Yes.
Suggestion is that whatever protocol is used for your testing, that that be handed over to whoever's going to do the additional testing.
Right, yes, we've got that.
I've got three national firms that do this every day lined up to go.
There's been a request for a little break, so if some of you want to clear out, you're more than welcome. Thank you for being with us. And, and we are back from break and we're going to go to the more mundane aspects of city life and get the city manager's report.
Oh man, I hope. Only item I have to report out is that last Thursday and Friday, along with Captain Federal, I was at the Contract Cities Educational Seminar with the Sheriff Department discussing the evolution of the department, our contract, et cetera, et cetera.
You're educated now.
I'm educated and expect an increase. It might be small, but we'll likely get some type of increase.
City attorney?
Just to report that our office is working with Edison on looking for grants for money. And our office is also the firm handling the city work for City of Santa Barbara on their desalinization plant. And that system is significantly different from Avalon's because the effluent from Santa Barbara goes out and then comes back in. Avalon's saltwater system goes out and it is taken away into the channel. So there's a marked difference between our two systems.
Okay, council members report. Councilwoman?
I have three items. One, I'll be attending the Gateway Cities Council of Government meeting tomorrow night. The Transportation Committee was canceled, however. The second one, in regards to the letter that the city manager spoke of, received back from the PUC, I might have been a little bit misunderstood. So I wanted to make a clarification that what I was hoping to see is the entire system of allocations that Edison does for water. So I realize, and I'm very well versed, there's a safe annual yield, they can give, they have to produce so much water, there's, with there's so much water available, then they can issue water allocations. I'm looking for what that official information is. And I'm assuming that it's something that's filed with the PUC.
Sure, and that along with a host of other topics may be addressed. We're actually, I have a conference call scheduled with the CPUC and Edison on Thursday, wherein we're trying to figure out how best to get the CPUC staff down here and the right Edison personnel. And working with your schedules, of course, to convene that. So I think all that can be, and the expectation is that that will be addressed.
Okay, so not just whether or not the last batch was done with any violations, which I've read the response back, but I would like to be better informed, not by just being told, but by the written document of how the allocation system occurs. And then third, I am, my interest with the blessing of the council and definitely another member who would like to participate, I would like to pull together, or direct staff to pull together a discussion group to talk about Phase 3 water rationing and exactly what our community's expectations are. I would assume that this group would include Jim Lutjehan from the chamber, would include our city manager, I'm requesting to be, I'd like to convene this, but I need the blessing of the council to be officially acting as part of the city. And when I'm talking about the community's expectation, and I'm sorry, other stakeholders in the community, large participants in marketing for the community. What I'm hoping to accomplish is to have the conversation of, what are we going to do? When we say when we go to Phase 3? Because we've already been told by Edison that we're looking at October, November. So are we looking at limiting our advertising, marketing? Are we looking at barging in water? I'm curious to know what the community is a large, what the island companies' thoughts are? What, you know, the several vacation rental companies, hotels in town? What are we going to do at that point? So I don't know that that's an open-ended discussion that we need to have at a council meeting, but I'd like to convene that group with your blessings.
I think you do, just like I do with the RTAP. You know, you, you make it like an advisory thing, you get to these people and you have your things and then you report back to us every once in a while. I think that's fine. I think Ben was saying that, weren't we starting to do some projections on that as well? Looking at what impact that would have?
Right, so as we, as we go into our fiscal year '15, '16 budget, one thing the Finance Director and also Gina and I have been talking about is exactly what you're speaking of, which is, you know, okay, Phase 3 water rationing. What's the correlation to city revenue? I don't have an answer for you immediately. We're going to talk to some other smart people and try to think about what that could look like and what that would mean as far as your concern, which is the availability of city services, right? I mean, that's something we have to be very open about. That, yeah, if you have less water, there could be a correlation to less revenue. Less revenue means potentially less service.
And then when you talk to somebody like Vacation Rentals, who's big, big operator- And then when you talk to somebody like Vacation Rentals, who's big, big operator, and yeah, what their plan is, because then that looks at what the potential for loss of, lack of TOT or sales tax and on and on and on.
Now, being mindful of that, you know, we're 100% tourist-based economy, I want to point out some weird anomalies, which is, you know, we've been in Phase Two for some time and our revenue has not gone down as I thought it would have. In fact, it's increased in a number of areas. So that's why we're going to be talking to a lot of people. I don't know that there's a simple answer. I don't know what a deterrent is. I'm going to be talking to people, Mayor Proten might be a good resource, people that, you know, went through a prior Phase Three water rationing that were in the hospitality business and others, of course.
Certainly a lot less people on the island and a heck of a lot less visitors during that time, too.
Also, it always seems interesting to me when they've, we've never really gotten to Phase Three, but every time it's after summer, visitors get here. And then the people, the residents here are stuck with the water shortage. I don't know how we could rectify that or fix it in any way, but there might be something to think about. But it seems like every time we come to something, it's always after summer, after all the water's being used up. And then the people who are year-round residents, then we're stuck with a barrel, with nothing in it. Just food for thought. I mean, I don't know what we could do to fix it, but it seems to me it's kind of suspicious.
Well, you're my blessing. I don't know if anybody else would like to participate as well, but sure.
And what was this for, exactly?
Talk about, you know, we're headed towards Phase Three water rationing. You know, where are we?
Where was, where was your representation going to be needed?
I would like to be a representative of the city.
For, for what?
To discuss what, I want to hear what others are thinking about. I want to know if they're planning, if they're scaling back their, they're scaling back their marketing, if they're, at the Chamber level, I know that the Board will have some discussions regarding this. I'm already participative in that, but I, but I'd like to go broader than that. You know, what is a plan? Because if we're going to be, you know, businesses in town are going to be spending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, which they do, in marketing, what, how are we going to handle that?
Please do. I mean, I've asked repeatedly for an emergency contingency protocol for Edison, and I haven't gotten any, except we're researching it. I've gotten no input whatsoever. Personally, I think we should start a water summit with all, all the people in town. And it should start right here up on this, up on this dais. And we should reach out to the public from here. And anybody who's interested in water should come up and give us their suggestions and their ideas, and we should reach out. But yeah, to answer your question, yes, I think, I think I'd give you my blessing to be a representative of the city, absolutely.
So I'll work with city staff and put together a group. And anybody who's watching, who has an interest in that, that would like to participate, at least, at the very least, send me an email, please.
And if you're successful, maybe we can reach out in a bigger way, in a broader way, and start our water summit. Because if Edison's not going to come and be forthright and transparent and clear and honest and everything we asked them to be tonight, we're going to have to do it on our own. We're going to have to tote this line on our own. At this point, we trust them, but we're going to go beyond that because we're not going to wait for them any longer. That's not, that didn't work. It hasn't worked. That's why we're at the point, and we had this meeting tonight, because they weren't transparent, so.
And then, Councilmember? Hernandez, you know, you okay? Councilmember Sampson, did you have any announcement?
Oh, yeah, I do. I'm just going to do, I think, one, one or two. Okay, this has to do with the reconstruction of the baseball field up at the school. The Avalon High School baseball field is looking really good up there. But there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. So anyway, we need to start, I'm trying to start a partnership with everybody in town to, and collect donations or whatever, wherever somebody would like to help, whether it be $10, $5, $100, or $1,500 to come up, if you're a contractor, if you're whatever, a handyman, anything you can do to help out. Okay, so it says here, I'm spearheading regarding Avalon baseball field upgrades. Your partner for Avalon Youth. I'm spearheading a work effort to upgrade and repair the facilities at the Avalon High School baseball field. The field is used throughout the year by Avalon Schools for baseball, soccer, football, and is also used by Avalon Kid Baseball for Youth, fourth grade through eighth grade, baseball league as well. The field and this facility have been in need of repair for many years, and we're going to make 2015 the year for action. We're looking for partners to donate funds, time, resources to help us with this cause. We have the support of Patty Engel, Avalon Schools Athletic Director, and Bill Volcom, Avalon Schools Facilities Manager. Long Beach Unified School District provides very little in the way of funds to maintain the field, and we are preparing to take care of the field's needs in-house, here at home, in the community. And we are asking for your support in any way, shape, or form. Zeller Construction is prepared to offer the services, trucks, manpower, materials, and whatever else may be needed to see this project through to a beautiful and successful outcome. Fine Line Construction is providing trackers and crane services. Beverly Beach Building Supplies, Rich Coffee, as they have done in the past, are already on board, and they're going to help us out with the wood needed to repair the bleachers and bathrooms. And then this is an attached list of things that these guys, so basically, reach out to anybody in the public, if you need a new pitching machine, that's $1,500. Safety screen netting, that's $97. We need pads for the scoreboard, we need pads for that, I mean, for the scoreboard, so people don't run into it and bump their heads or their noggin. Elf-shaped pitching screen, $60. New batting cage net, $970. New chain link fencing, chain link fencing around the batting cage, base lines, baseball bats. The high school team only has three bats from the school. We need to get these guys some bats. They're not cheap either, some of the bats these kids use, but they're not complaining. So the bathrooms need a new roof. I'm going to get up there and help them out with that. Repair and replace rotten fascia boards, rafters, exterior, great storage closet doors. So these are the kinds of things, the citizens of Avalon would like to get involved, or anybody would like to donate something. Mr. Garcia has been great in helping us out with getting donations from the Edison, the people who own stock in Edison, to donate money. And so basically what he's asking is, let's get together, partnership, let's join hands, make that field great, so that the kids of Avalon, our high school coach here, will benefit from this. As also the visiting teams as well, they come over. And that's the gist of what I'm doing. And so you can talk to Patty Engel or Bill Volcom if you want to donate money to this. And this is going directly to the field. It's not going anywhere else, okay? That's, that's the, that's the gist of my announcement, and thank you for listening.
Mayor Proten?
So like, on Thursday evening, I'm going to the Lead California Cities Los Angeles County Division meeting. It's by Eliet for a couple hours, and then that's about it.
Cool. Excellent. Okay. I just want to say that Catalina Kid Ventures is going to be selling their tickets to St. Patrick's Day Dinner, which will be held at VM Restaurant. So we'll have the tickets available tomorrow. Hopefully, we're selling in the bank tomorrow. We're going to be around, but they have them at CKV. Hopefully, I can talk to Mr. Lutjehan about the girls selling them and where they did last year at the Chamber Office. So we'll have posters around. We're a little late getting started, but we're looking for your support.
March 17.
March, always.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, yes. And I have some, kind of some sad news for the youth of, a lot of the youth of Avalon and some of the parents, that Mr. Del Barro and Martine, who were trying to put together the Catalina Aqua Park, were in touch with the Coastal Commission, and they pretty much said, because, Ben says it more eloquently, but because there's some exclusivity, because they would be charging for that, they're not able to do that. So instead of putting through the permit for however much it costs and being told no, he's kind of abandoned that. And it's a sad day because the people and the children of Avalon were really looking forward, a lot of them were really looking forward to that. So it just tells me that we have a lot of work to do to try to find more activities for our kids in Avalon, because that would have taken care of a big hole, I believe. So anyway, that's all I'm going to talk about.
So St. Patrick's Days on our next meeting, too, by the way.
Yes.
Oh, good. So bring your green eggs and ham.
No, and I'll bring all of the food to the, this will be an eating meeting.
All of Bailey's good with that?
And green gas.
I wanted to thank Rhonda Kaylich and the Choices for the great event that they held here at the City Hall, and I guess they did it at the school as well, and they're reaching out to parents about how to curtail your kids from getting involved in things they shouldn't, such as, you know, drinking and drug use. And it was just a great program. I attended it, I attended it myself. I'm glad I was invited. My son attended it at school. We all learned a lot from it, and it was very helpful for a lot of the people in our community, as this is something that's very important going into the future. And also, Kids at Play is going to have a play coming up, and there's the Rubber Ducky Derby, so the kids are going to be having those rubber ducks around, so donate to that. And that's always a fun thing, and that's another way that you can support the community and help the kids out, too. Just a couple bucks, throw it their way. They're going to be soliciting that, basically. Thank you.
Okay. That's what, okay. Oral communications, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? And you will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken. Yes?
Allison Osensky, 356 Sumner. Just a quick question. I just wondered, when the study on installing personal D-Sol units in residence is going to be completed? When the moratorium will be lifted? Should we like to do something more than pray for rain? We'd like to make our own water. Also, just curious, there's no regulation of the boats that sit in our harbor, and on any given summer day, probably dozens of them have their D-Sol units working in the harbor. Is there no restriction on that? And if that's the case, could we put a barge or a boat in the harbor to make water? If we're being held up on some reason that we can't start moving forward with the D-Sol unit?
Would you like to respond to that in any way? Or put it on the agenda for next time?
Well, okay, so we reached out to ES. ES is in the process of drafting a discharge permit, which would be required for any new, if you will, D-Sol unit to be installed in town. We are aware that there are some existing D-Sol units that are not authorized that were installed. I'm not saying that they were necessarily illegal, but they certainly didn't reach out to the city, and there was no permit at the time of installation. So we are looking to go back and contact those property owners with that. I don't have a date. Denise, do you know when ES might have that draft?
Mr. Ryan Bonner just reached out to us at the end of last week, I believe, in an email to Dennis and I, saying that he hopes to finalize it in the next week or so. So be very soon.
We know this is of interest, and so we will keep you, Council, in the loop. The other thing I will say is that we've also been contacted by Southern California Edison about this, and they are interested in discussing this as well. As far as boats in the harbor and water makers, yes, you are, small units onboard boats are in existence, and they're in the harbor currently. I think considering the cease and desist order and the scrutiny of the cities under, I would not recommend a large-scale boat and a large-scale D-Sol unit in the middle of our harbor. We've got challenges with water quality. I would not recommend opening this up to that type of, I would want to seek some type of permit. I could certainly explore that with the Water Board. I don't think that they're going to be friendly to that type of proposal.
That's a question you don't want to ask. You just, there are big boats in the harbor that have big water makers making lots of water, but private vessels have been exempted for a gazillion years. Yeah.
What do they do with it, Brian? Brian goes back with that. Does it go back into the harbor?
Does, it does.
Better, baby.
Does that kind of answer, are you good enough? Is that good enough for now, Allison?
And what's the difference between, like, the portable unit that was brought over and putting a barge in?
Well, the portable unit, we actually discharged into the wastewater treatment plant. And it was permitted.
I remember.
Being a big difference, so, yeah.
Any other oral communications? Consent calendar?
Yes, Mayor, we have one item on the consent calendar. This evening, actions from the February 17 Council meeting.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve council actions from February 17.
Further comment? Call for the vote.
Oh, jeez.
All eyes. Item number three.
General business this evening, Mayor. So I guess, forgive my ignorance, so is it safe to say we've satisfied number two under general business? We're...
Other than discuss anything?
Yes, let's leave that open in case.
We're still, yeah, it's for closed session.
Leaving general, so leaving item number two still open?
Yes.
Okay. I just wasn't sure. Okay. Amanda is here. Item number three is the consideration of an ordinance for the permitting of, excuse me, the regulating of single-room occupancy facilities. Amanda can provide you with a brief update on this one. Thank you, Amanda.
So this is the second time we submit. This has been in front of you once before, and the question was asked, have we thought about how zoning for SROs would interact or work with our inclusionary housing ordinance? So we took it back to the planning commission, and what we did is we just added one sentence in there that said, single-room occupancies could be utilized to satisfy the inclusionary housing ordinance, but that it would be subject to approval in their inclusionary housing plan. So any specific project would be submitting an inclusionary housing plan, and as part of that plan, they would be proposing whatever type of housing they would be proposing, and that type of housing would be approved on a case-by-case basis. So perhaps the project might warrant SROs as their inclusionary housing, and depending on the type of project, maybe it wouldn't. And so whether or not we allowed SROs to satisfy inclusionary requirements would be approved on a case-by-case, project-by-project basis. And so that's the language we had to the ordinance.
So basically, we're open and vague?
No, we're saying that, we're saying we would allow SROs to be considered as inclusionary units on a project-by-project basis.
We're not blanketly allowing.
We're not excluding it. We're not saying you can't do it.
So then you come up with subjectivity again.
Case-by-case, right?
Right. It's a case-by-case.
I know.
Single-room occupancy as in studio apartments?
Right.
Oh, that's awesome.
So I have another, just one other question. So I have a unit with six rooms, I'm running out six rooms, correct? In my little, because something about running up to six, anything six and over, right? Am I, am I losing my mind? Am I losing my mind, kids?
I don't know. I'm trying to find what...
There are requirements for, once you hit a certain number of units, you have to provide a kitchen or bathroom facility. So it's not a limitation on the number, it just says, once you hit, for bathroom facilities, I think it's three units? You got to provide a bathroom and kitchen facilities.
Four.
Okay. So the question is, now, how are vehicles impacted by that? You have four, five, six different people living in, one of those things, everybody's entitled to one address?
No. Every, I believe, as it cooperates with our vehicle code, vehicle code is, autoettes are registered to dwelling units. Dwelling units are defined by kitchens. So a single-room occupancy that does not, a single-room occupancy unit that is sharing a kitchen will not qualify for a vehicle.
That is correct.
That's not a habitable unit.
Will not qualify for any. Will not qualify for any, or just one per kitchen?
No.
No?
Do not qualify.
These units do not qualify for golf carts.
As if they do not have kitchens. If you have, but single-room occupancies may be developed and each have their own kitchen. They're not, it's, it's not, if it has its own kitchen to where it satisfies the, um, definition of a dwelling unit, then yes, they would be able to register a vehicle to it, just like the studios up at the Whitley Arms. They're efficiency units, they're legal dwelling units, they can register a vehicle. So it's tied to the existence of the kitchen and the definition of the dwelling.
But the definition of a dwelling is greater than 170 square feet.
I agree that is correct.
Okay, so, but these, the minimum of these is 170 square feet?
190.
190. So whatever the number I read. It's just, could we preclude SROs from having golf carts?
Could you?
Yeah.
In the vehicle code, yes.
So an unit that's defined as an SRO, whether it has a kitchen or not, could be precluded from having a golf cart?
If you put that definition, or if you change the municipal code dealing with autoettes, yes, you can do that.
Because otherwise, we could be expanding a problem that we have here.
Because currently, I believe, um, if you think about the Westbrook, it meets the definition of an SRO. There's individual rooms, they share baths, they share kitchens. Each one of those rooms is not allowed to register a golf cart. I think that property is recognized as having one manager's unit with a separate kitchen, and so they're only allowed to register...
There's another unit that has a kitchen. The tower has a kitchen.
Right.
But it's not the manager.
So each one of those individual bedrooms are not allowed to register a separate autoet.
But a kitchen can be a...
It's a food preparation.
Food preparation area. It could be one of those little suckers that's this wide, that's got a sink in it, it's got a microwave in it, and we got the kitchen, food preparation area, and a refrigerator in it.
Our policy has been to define the cooking facility as if it requires a 220 outlet.
Yep.
Because otherwise, everybody's wet bar with a microwave is a kitchen.
Does the code say 220? Or is that just our policy?
It's not. It's been a policy. Because we've had people want to put in these little wet bar things with, you know, a hot plate, and it's like, oh, no. So we've had to try to...
And doors box.
Right, right.
Well, we're also required to adopt this ordinance by the state of California. So you don't, you, eventually, you have to adopt an SRO ordinance as part of state law. Because state law encourages this alternative type of, uh, housing.
And all we're doing tonight is saying, these are the zones where we would allow them to be developed should someone want to develop this type of property.
Okay, other comments? Audience have any questions or comments? Okay.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Would you like a motion?
I think that would be wonderful.
City Council, introduce and waive all further readings of ordinance to the City Council of the City of Avalon, amending Avalon's Municipal Code 9-5.404, High Density Use Conditional Use Permits, and 9-5, that, dot, 504, like, 504, 404, I'm sorry, 404, and 504, High Density Residential, um, Low-Moderd Income Housing Units by Conditional Use Permits, and adding Article 3 to Chapter 16 of Title IX of the Avalon Municipal Code to establish and regulate single-room occupancy facilities.
They moved, is there a second?
Yep. What, you have to add, um, about, what you said about the vehicles on there?
You have ordinance, different ordinance.
That's a, different ordinance.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, yeah, I have a second there.
Okay, moved to seven. Other comments? Call for the vote? Oops. All righty, item number four.
All eyes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, could, could we give additional direction?
Sure.
Sure, to possibly bring back at a future council meeting, not necessarily the next one, consideration of amending the ordinance to preclude SROs?
Yes.
Okay. We don't wanna wait until we work on all that other transportation stuff, or that might take a little while.
This is kind, this, to me, would be a given.
Hang on, that's, I'm, I'm sorry, man, we, we, sorry, I have to set up the mic for a minute.
If we're gonna bring back the definition of a dwelling unit in the vehicle code, do we want to further define what is a kitchen? So do we wanna define that it's with a 220 outlet, or with its cooking facilities other than a microwave, or is that something we wanna tackle?
And is that going on into the future, or is that gonna be taking everything that's already established and going back and making that part?
Well, it, it, you would be introducing to the code, um, a practice that we're already doing. You'd be adding some, some teeth, which is always good. Um, yeah, well, I mean, we could, we, we could do, we could do both.
Would my gas stove qualify?
Your gas stove?
Yeah.
Probably.
I would, I...
No, not your little gas stove. No, not, your Coleman would not qualify. Your Coleman is not gonna qualify.
It's got, it's got the ignition on it, right?
But it doesn't require a 220 outlet, so...
Probably doesn't.
Yeah, it doesn't. Right, probably doesn't.
There's a lot of people in this town that probably rent rooms, and, uh, they need their vehicles because they own businesses, and, you know, what I'm saying is, low budget, um, and, uh, and, um, I don't, I don't want to have to go back and say, okay, all you people, you're gonna get dinged, um, and we're gonna take your golf cart away because you don't have it in your kitchen in your, in your, um...
I don't think, I'm sorry, I, I don't think it would be, it'd be a whole nother process to make it retroactive.
Maybe, how about this, would, would we, can we maybe discuss this internally, um, and then come back to you with the update, so that we're, no, it's okay, no, I just, I, there's a lot of tentacles on that one. I, I understand the concerns and the desire. So let, let me and Amanda and some others talk about it.
And possibly, it might wanna go through Planning Commission to flesh it all out before it comes to us. Yeah, okay.
Well, and now you're talking about housing and hab, hab, habability, or whatever you call that.
Habitation.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay, so, um, item number four is regarding the trash collection services and the contract with Aladdin Cleaning. And actually, on this item, you were going to hear from Denise.
Yeah.
Thank you for your patience.
Let Denise go?
I'm gonna go first before you, Eddie, okay? I know Eddie does wanna speak to you guys. He wants to, um, I know this weekend, I have several things to say. First, I placed in front of you tonight an amended list of places that Eddie services. Um, and I do wanna start off that Eddie has, or Aladdin Cleaning has done a wonderful job for the city. He entered into this contract when we went out to bid in 2000, and it's gone out to bid a couple times since then. He's always been awarded it. We, our staff is very satisfied with the service that he provides us. You can call him at the drop of a hat, and he responds immediately to us. And my goal tonight, if you decide to go out for our P, that's fine. If you don't, I would like to, uh, have you guys determine, I had put in there one year, but maybe we could do it for two or three years, and then, um, maybe at that, you could just all direct that we go out to bid automatically at the end of that time, and also determine if you wanted to keep with the same terms of the contract that he has.
Denise, can I just ask you to introduce the item, and just for the, for the general population watching, what are we talking about?
I'm sorry, I thought Ben did do that at the beginning. I apologize.
Well, I did it very, very high level. I was trying to kick the entire thing to you.
This is the contract that the city has, uh, for the public, uh, facilities of trash collection all around town. So he hits, uh, city parks, the fuel dock, Pleasure Pier, out at the mall, along all the walkways, all of downtown area, places like that. And in 2013, when Mr. Wagner brought this before the council, he, well, I think only was in Richard Redyon, and then also, they stipulated a few things. At that point, Mr. Vega was still getting, um, fuel from the city, and now he gets it on his own, and he provides proof of that. Uh, Mr. Wagner wanted to make sure, somebody on council, that he has a uniform of some kind, so he did a, a T-shirt with the city logo on it. And I know that Councilman Cassidy has some other ideas on that that she wants to share. And we, um, increased his, or we were supposed to increase his contract every year by the CPI. So, in doing this staff report, I discovered that that was not done. So he was awarded it in 2013. So in 2014, for that year, he should have been awarded the CPI. And Mr. Woidzik figured that out for me. Did I give that to you, Eddie? I think it was .7, and so, um, he'll be getting a check for $800. That was the CPI. Uh, any questions?
No.
Comments? Or do you wanna hear from Mr. Vega?
We, just real quick, on the, on the gasoline, about him doing it, is our gas cheaper than the gas out there?
Uh, when he was receiving it from the city, I, I, I don't know that there was payment exchange. Is that, is it, was it in kind, or I don't...
Oh, that's correct. No, he was just getting it for...
He was getting free.
And, and it was always supposed to be part of his contract, that he took care of the fuel, but it was something that was overlooked.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Mr., I don't have any questions right now, so would you like to...
Yeah, actually, I want to read a letter, and I, what do you guys, uh, uh, you're just cancel out. I'm ready, this better, and hoping that, uh, the, the end of this meeting, uh, you won't actually give me an extension for one year. Actually, I'm hoping you have a three-year extension. Uh, the reason why, as you know, I have been, uh, we have been having a lot of issues for, to fix, uh, in town on certain receptacles and trash cans. Uh, as you, as, as you can read on the, um, the agenda, the city is responsible for, uh, trash cans and receptacles, and I never asked for any, neither for, uh, because before I asked, uh, for anything to the city, I start to fix the problem myself, creating new trash cans on my own, that meet the needs of them. As you know, little by little, I have been creating, uh, on my own with, uh, without asking for anything more to the city. At this time, like I say, I have new ideas, uh, every day. Now I include new stickers with a new logo created for, for my son Eric Vega, uh, graphic designer, with a Astro case and a doggy bag case, all in, all included, as you can see, all around town. Uh, how I, how I actually create it, I create it with a feedback with people, and local people, and tourists. And since that means more Astros and more doggy bag cases on town, it seems that people are very pleased with the trash cans, as, and using them, the doggy bags, not leaving food behind, and putting cigarettes on an Astro case, uh, container. As you can see, I wrote a letter to the city, uh, July, uh, 2014, about this concern, but I, I never had responded. As you, as you can see, I never give up, uh, continuing doing my, my work. Last summer, uh, I received a call from city staff that I couldn't, uh, drive the trash truck in Front Beach, uh, making my, my job even more harder. But I, I, but as, as you can see, uh, with, with my, on my face, actually, I did it and created a new metal, metal, metal board with the Segway and a trailer hitch with the trash truck included. As you can see, all of this costs money and time, but I never asked for it. I had a lot of things to do. To get ready for summer, I have to spend about $2,000, $3,000 on a green beer enclosed trash area. I need three more trash carts and more trash cans on town, which I've been glad to fix the problem. The only thing that I'm asking was to the city supply the doggy bags. And thank you.
Can I address a couple things?
Sure.
I was the one that placed a call to Eddie last summer, asking him, because we got a lot of complaints about the smelly trash truck going down the center of Crescent Avenue in our busy time of the day. And so I asked him if there was some other times that he could resort to do that. And then he got very creative, and we've all seen him around town with his Segway and his cart, and we're very appreciative of that, because I, I know it, it makes him work harder. Um, as far as the trash cans, I had deliberately left that off of the agenda this evening as part of the staff report, because I wanted to see if we were gonna award the contract or not, and then we can determine at another council meeting how we wanna proceed forward with all the trash cans in town. I know Avalon Beautiful was trying to, um, orchestrate something. I know we got some donated from the conservancy that went mainly, um, in Upper Canyon here. Uh, so I think the trash can should be dealt with separately. I do wanna tell Eddie, I told him he should go get, um, a copyright on those trash cans of, they're very ingenious of how he has a place now for the cigarettes, instead of them, people putting them out on the sides of the trash cans and destroying the cans, and then having the doggy bags. Um, it was very creative. And maybe they could be fine-tuned or something, but he's very creative in what he's done.
Sure.
Is there any part of what is in this report that you take issue with? I mean, are you, everything that's down here, you're okay with, except for wanting, uh, doggy bags? The dollar amounts and all of that, you're good with?
Everything is fine. Everything is all, it's all, it's just that...
Okay. Um... Comments?
Right.
No, no, please, go ahead.
No, I just, just wanna say that, uh, I've known Eddie for a long time, since he's been doing this, and this whole family participates in, in what he does. One of the few guys that really does have his family working for him, and I think he does a great job for the city, and I'd like to see him continue to do that, but I'd also like to see us maybe give him that three-year extension. I think it's kinda ridiculous, come back every year to try to bid on it and wait on it. Uh, does a great job for the city. He's got family going to school, he's been here for a while, uh, does a great job, and I'd kinda like to see us give him a three-year extension on that thing. That's just my personal opinion.
Ditto. Uh, I think the trash can liners are easy, are more accessible in what Eddie has created than they are in those, those little boxes. Those, they, people try to jimmy, jimmy them to get them out of there. When they put in the full bags, you can't get them out. They stop, you try to get your finger in there, and they get stuck, and they're, they, those don't seem to be working very well. Uh, so, I don't know how much we're talking in doggy bags, but I like that option for, um, for now, so if we could contribute to the doggy bags, I would like to do that also.
I think we're gonna have another discussion about trash cans in general, um, and I would certainly like to add, as part of that discussion, how many, um, my personal thought is, you should be able to turn around and see a trash can. You shouldn't have to go look for one. So I wanna see, um, I spoke to Mr. Vega, and right now, his contract says up to, or approximately 200. He's, um, servicing right now about 150. I know there's been some more added around town, so perhaps our next conversation should encompass all of those comments and then some. So I'm happy to do that. Um, I am, uh, equally happy with the service that you've provided in town. I know, I myself have put together events that you have come at odd hours to take trash, and, um, I do see you in other events participating at, it, you know, different hours than you normally would, and I very much appreciate that. That's the service. Um, have, would not like to see us do anything less than a three-year extension. I'm perfectly happy with a three-year extension on the contract. But with that, I want to have it noted that, um, liability insurance is in place, workman's comp insurance is in place, regardless of whether you have your family working for you or not, workman's comp insurance is required. And, um, you know, uh, ensuring that there is steam cleaning when need be for the trash cans. I know that you do, do a lot of the repairs, and that's part of the contract as well, but just cleanliness of the cans. And we also spoke, and you do keep your bond in place, so I appreciate that. Um, and then with regard to the uniforms, one of the conversations that I did have was whether or not it was appropriate for a contractor of the city to use the city's logo and the city's seal as part of their uniform. And, uh, Mr. Vega and I spoke about that, in that, um, his understanding was that was, or my understanding is that was a request of the city for him to use the city's seal. Um, but I, I just wanna make sure that everybody else is comfortable with that. And then with regards to uniforms, that, um, it's very... And then with regards to uniforms, that it's very clear to the public that you're with the city as sanitation worker. We talked about the uniforms, for example, that our other trash cleanup providers wear, potentially a vest that shows obviously that you're, you know, working and not just moving buckets of trash or bags or whatnot. So those were my only concerns.
So where were you going on those uniforms?
Well, to make sure that not only Mr. Vega, but everybody in his family or any future employees are wearing a uniform.
And are you more geared to say, don't have the city logo? Or do you have the city logo? Or you don't have an opinion?
I... The shirt that he... That Mr. Vega was wearing when he met with me said...
Oh.
Says "under contract by the city of Avalon."
That's fine.
Which I don't have a problem with that. I just want to make sure that the use of the city's seal, because he's not actually an employee of the city, but that that's okay with the council. And then also that everybody's in a uniform and that it's a clear delineation that you're working in this capacity versus just, you know, everyday clothes.
And I concur with Ms. Cassidy's comments.
Yes, mine agree. Public comment at all?
I just got something to say. Yeah. I think we need to help Eddie. By the way, I really appreciate the work you do too. And making your own cans, I think that was great, awesome, ingenious. Like Denise had a great idea too. You should probably try to get a trademark on those things. It's a good idea. But it's a good application for here. Except we got to help Eddie industrialize those things. I mean, if he's going to make them himself and spend his own money on those things, they need to be beefed up a little bit, because I can see in some areas, they... You know, he's got to make them on a whim. He's got to make them on his own time when he's not picking up trash. And that's probably not much time you have to do it. I've seen you do it, you know, early in the morning before you go to work and even late at night when you get home. So I understand that. So if we can just, you know, off the record, assist him in some way, help him out with maybe, you know, some designs like your brother, who's an engineer and fabricator, might be able to help him big hit with some of his... Some of his designs that might be flaws. Or maybe customize some of those trash cans, because I noticed like on Casino Way, they're a little bit too wide. So we need to, you know, because they take up like a third of the walkway. So maybe we can get a couple of custom ones, a little smaller for that area.
I have a... Can I comment on that?
Mm-hmm, please.
We have a... We have the dock right there, the boat dock right there. And I have two trash bins across the street, which actually people don't use. And I have the small one. Actually, I have the small one before right there. And they were actually... The people that come from the boats coming out, leaving the trash in there, filling up the trash can really, really fast. That was a 20 gallon trash can. So now it's a 50 gallon trash can, and it's actually filling the... But I actually... What happened, it was actually on the middle of the trash can was on the middle, and I actually pushed it a different way, a different way. Because these are different sizes and both sizes. So I actually cut off like two inches more, which is actually the same size as the small one all the way down to the... I already adjusted. If you actually can go and look at it, I think you can... You have the same space that you have before with the small one that we have right there before.
Okay, I'll check it out.
It's already...
Yeah, maybe we can...
That was the issue about... That's the only issue that I have right there, because I do need a big trash can right there because it's because of the dock that we have right there. You know, people don't want to go across the street and put the... They just didn't have the trash can very fast.
We should put a sign out there, something, and say, boaters, please use trash can across the street.
Same problem I have with the other dock where they... They, you know, people coming up from the boats, and they just leave them there. They got, you know, filling up the trash, the trash can very fast.
Aside from that, you're good with your Segway, carrying trash? That's a great idea. It's quiet. It's quick. It's smaller. It's easier. I understand the complaints that Denise's sentiments has resonated because I've got some of the same, but it's not anything to do with you. It's just the trash truck. It's a trash truck. It's big, and it's smelling.
Yeah.
And so you put that... Where do you stay the trash truck, just up the street?
I like to follow her, and I understand the situation that we have. You know, I have a lot of people walking from the street, and there's a lot of kids around with a truck in there. And I was trying actually to adjust the before, but you know, it never come to the idea until I have actually... That's a good thing I had, that they told me not to put it in there. So I had the idea to create and...
Brilliant. I think it's brilliant. You've done a great job. And what I'm saying is I'd like to reach out to you so the city can maybe help you mitigate some of your design... Maybe some of the design... Design work that needs to be industrialized a little bit in order to make your cans maybe lighter or whatever you need. I mean, a heavy trash can is good, so the kids can't or whoever can't get it like we've had and throw them in the water, which we've seen. And I really appreciate you buying some new cans, because those old beat-up cans that are falling apart that you've been... Have kind of inherited. I, you know, we need to get over that and give you something to work with that makes the town, you know... People will utilize, like Cindy said, we need them more close together so that wherever people look, they'll find a trash can. But they need to be easy to get into, and that opening needs to be where, after so many uses, it gets all dirty, and then people don't want to put their hand on it. You know, so we need to keep that clean too. But anyway, just because you've done such a great job, I can agree with the other councilmen. I would be behind renewing your contract for a couple of years too, for sure.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend the trash collection services agreement with Aladdin Cleaning for three years, commencing from the day his current contract expires. April 15th forward.
Second. Oh, are you going to include the doggy bags? City provide a doggy bag?
Oh, yes. And to include that the city would also provide...
Reimbursement for the doggy bags?
On the trash cans that exist now.
On the trash cans that exist now.
City staff will bring back trash can item.
Yes. Soon.
We got to discuss that.
Still second.
They have moved in second. Further discussion? Call for the vote?
Public, public, public.
Oh, I did. I said, any further discussion? Call for the vote? All ayes.
Thank you very much.
Hi, we're done.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay.
Okay, last item on general business is item number five, which is a request to allow us to execute a professional service agreement with RBF for Phase One of the sewer infrastructure repair program. RBF has been involved with our sewer replacement under the CDO. We are required to put together a public bid for Phase One. We don't have the bandwidth internally to do that on our own, so we are requesting that you allow us to do this through RBF. Dennis Jage is here. He can answer any questions that you have. Dennis, you want to come and run this case?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is in accordance with our sewer infrastructure goals and in compliance with the CDO. We have to start this procedure. RBF's familiarity with the island really helped out. You can see the difference in costs. So I requested four firms quotes, and only two of them got back to me, RBF and Dudek. And you can see the significance, dollar value there. So it's quite a savings due to their familiarity with the island. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Did you say this is in reference to the vaults?
Pardon me?
The vaults?
No.
Or just in general, we're going to look at the sewer system and fix it where it needs to be fixed?
Yes, we have an idea from past CCTVs, television, and from public works inspections. We're going to compile the... On a priority basis, the repairs that need to be made right away. The first phase is going to include a lot of manholes. And we're going to add some manholes on dead end lines and restore some manholes inside. We have a few that are leaking that we keep repairing, putting Band-Aids on. We're going to repair them in a permanent nature.
Do you think they might address that big, like 18-inch line that runs down Front Street out towards the sewer plant? I mean, eventually, do you think they might be able to...
Yeah, one of our first repairs is going to be right by Wrigley Stage. We have a little issue there that we keep going in a manhole fixing and that line there.
I think it's 18 inches, isn't it, right now? Or 16?
It's... I think it's around 12.
Oh, 12, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, not quite 18.
Okay.
10 to 12.
That's the main line, right? That runs...
It does, unfortunately. Now, we're looking at, believe it or not, connecting on Tremont over here and taking a lot of the sewage down Tremont and then down Catalina.
Oh, I see.
And going over.
Going around that.
Yeah. We're looking at analyzing what happens if we add some housing upstream and some future developments. What's going to be the best route for sewage?
Yeah, absolutely. That sounds like something that's kind of necessary, considering... We've had some hotspots down there on the beach in that area too, so...
We have.
That's a great, great... You have identified that area of problems.
Well, we di-tabbed the pier. Marissa di-tabbed the pier a little while back. We found a couple of little leaks. And as you know, we've been testing twice a week, even though LA County hasn't. And we're concerned about a couple of spots, but we continue to put Band-Aids on them and get them fixed. But it's time now to get in the ground and get some... Get a program going to replace some bad typing that can't be lined or repaired right now.
And we have budgeted this money too, right?
We do. This is budgeted.
Nice.
15, 16. We're going to come back and ask you for a little bit more, because as you know, the mobilization fees and everything is expensive, and we'd like to try to get as much as we can during this first phase. I think it'd be a well-worth the effort to discuss it and 15, 16 budget.
With the cease and desist, it sounds like it's a necessity, so...
It's a necessity.
Nice. Nice work, and thank you for addressing those problems, because that's something that was, I think, was on our priority list as well.
It was, yes.
Yeah.
Councilman Hernandez mentioned the infrastructure.
You have my blessing on this one.
Very good.
Dennis.
Any other questions?
Does the public have any comments? Okay. Counsel, it is your pleasure.
I make a motion, authorize execution of professional services agreement with consulting firm, RBF Consulting, Phase One of the 10-year sewer infrastructure repair program.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second. Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay. City manager?
We're going into closed session, two closed sessions. One aforementioned with anticipated litigation, the other for public employee performance evaluation. City manager?
And we're back from closed session. Any reportable action?
We do have reportable action in closed session. The city council unanimously directed staff to hire a firm to do the appropriate testing as determined by the city and the city's consultants for both PCPs and other chemicals. Second, the city is asking Edison to immediately stop transferring any water until the testing is completed and results are in. And third, directed that the city manager contact the appropriate regulators to assist the city in accomplishing Goals Number One and Two, which is the testing and the ceasing of transfer. All regulatory agencies, including the county of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much.
Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony. Meeting adjourned.